Simone, welcome to the third and final day of this month's Coastal Commission hearing. We'll begin with a roll call, please.
Give me a second. Commissioner Baczko.
Here.
Commissioner Dunlow. Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Notoff.
Here.
Commissioner Prestiato. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Chair Harmon.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Could we please move to the virtual meeting procedures?
Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have internet access and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use CalSpan website. Those who wish to address Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request form may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submittals are available on the Commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comments may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comments are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. We will accept a request to speak on a regular agenda item up until the Chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have internet access, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When is your time to address the Commission? The organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much, Simone. Now, we will go to agenda changes for today, please. Mr. Schwing.
Thank you, Chair Harmon, and good morning to everybody who's joining us today. There is an agenda changes sheet that was posted to the website that remains accurate except for three additions this morning, which I will identify as I go through the list, which is a little bit long, so bear with me. Starting with item 8A, that was CDP application 123744, the Pacific Gas and Electric project that is withdrawn. Item 8B, CDP application 125285, the Sequoia Investments 10 project in Humboldt County that's moved to consent. Item 10A, that's LCP amendment from the City of Dana Point for their zoning code and IP reconciliation, that's a time extension only, that's moved to consent. This morning adding item 12A, that's CDP application number 524224, Seaside Coastal Living in San Clemente, that's postponed. Item 12B, also a new addition, this is CDP application 524742, this is the SCRA project in San Clemente that is postponed. Item 12C, that's CDP application 524751, this is the City of Newport Beach Public Works project, that's moved to consent. Adding this morning item 12D, that's CDP application 524801, the Dunwald application in San Clemente that is postponed. Item 14A, LCP amendment, LCP 6CAR 2413-1, that's the Carlsbad Housing Element Rezone, that's moved to consent. Item 14B, that's LCP amendment, LCP 6CAR 2412-1, the Aura Circle Open Space Rezone, that's moved to consent. Item 14C, LCP amendment 6SAN 2224, this is City of San Diego's Transit Priority Area Parking Reform, that's moved to consent. Item 14D, another City of San Diego LCP amendment related to the first matter, their Housing Action Package 2.0, that's moved to consent. Item 14E, the LCP amendment SAN 2437-3, this is the DeAnza Natural Amendment Update, this is just a time extension only, that's moved to consent. Item 15A, that's CDP application 624503, the Olneck Application in San Diego, that's moved to consent. And last, item 15B, CDP application 624584, Carlsbad Buena Vista Creek Maintenance is also moved to consent. And that completes our agenda changes this morning.
Great. Thank you very much. And now, we will move to general public comment, please.
Thank you.
Okay. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment. We are going to take in-person speakers today first, followed by a presentation by the San Diego Seagull Society. And then, we need to trail all of the Zoom speakers till the end of the day after their regular agenda. So if you are on Zoom waiting for general public comments, you'll have to hang out for our regular agenda, and we'll come back to you at the end of the day. So we'll start with in-person speakers. We have Walter Lamb, followed by Adam Leverens, and then Maureen Ellenberger. You can approach the mic. I'm not seeing Walter Lamb. Adam Leverens.
Sorry. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I'm going to talk a bit about the moorings in Newport Harbor and the city's unique management style of public state trust lands, which contribute to privilege for wealth. I've got some slides that I hope can be called up. They have a residential peer rate that goes into the tidelands fund. These are houses with docks. It's currently at 58 cents a square foot per year. 10 years ago, Mayor and Council decided that they would only assess that fee on the physical footprint of the dock. So for 10 years, people with houses have been benefiting from free boat storage over state lands at a loss of millions of dollars to the tidelands fund. The chart on the right, when they sublet their spaces on their docks, they're supposed to pay a small commercial marina rate, which is 99 cents a square foot, so 41 cents a square foot more annually. And on the right-hand side is the number of sublets that report as subletting. There's 21 listed there. It's pretty common knowledge that far more sublet than that, so that's another way the tidelands fund is being deprived of revenue. Go to the next slide, please. I was able to find online three websites that assist homeowners with subletting their slips. There's an article from the LA Times that says Newport Bay Boat Slips Give Birth to Lucrative Side Income for Residents. And there's a map from that website showing various prices for slips around the harbor. And it says that they have assisted hundreds of slip owners in Newport and Huntington, but yet only 21 report as subletting. Next slide, please. This is another couple of websites. One calls NAGA Slip and one called Dock Skipper. Again, there's slips rented there, one of them for like $43,000 a year, another one for like $2,900 a month. And on the bottom, there's some other ones. There's also a Newport GIS map on the next slide. They indicate which slips sublet, and if the pins are in the proper location, they're not paying their fees either. Yet, the mooring fees, I pay 235% more for less access, and something's wrong here. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Harmon and members of the Coastal Commission. My name is Maureen Ellenberger. I am a resident of Santa Barbara County, a Chair of the Santa Barbara Ventura Chapter of the Sierra Club, a fearless grandmother, and a proud member of Third Act. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm once here, I'm here once again to remind you of the critical importance of your work and to support your efforts in stopping the restart of the corroded Sable Pipeline on the Gaviota Coast. Last April, when you met in Santa Barbara, hundreds of people showed up to support the work. We are all still depending on you and supporting your efforts. That day, we met Joseph Bottoms, who was born in Santa Barbara. He reminded us how long we've been fighting oil disasters on our coast. The next day, he gave my neighbors a copy of the Santa Barbara Declaration of Environmental Rights, created by UCSB professors and community members after the devastating 1969 oil spill in the Santa Barbara Channel. I've brought copies of that declaration for you all today. It was presented as a resolution in the U.S. House of Representatives by Representative John V. Tunney on January 20, 1970. After the oil spill, Mr. Tunney spoke about the continued devastation to our ocean waters, our shorelines, and marine life from ill-planned offshore oil drilling disasters. His words remain painfully relevant today. This declaration points out that centuries of careless neglect of the environment have brought mankind to a final crossroads, and that the quality of our lives is eroded and our very existence is threatened by the abuse of the natural world. The people of Santa Barbara are still fighting for these environmental rights, not just for ourselves and our waters, but for everyone. We urge you to continue this fight. Stop the Sable Pipeline from restarting and potentially spilling once again. Demand the development permit that no one else in our state or federal government seems to care about. The declaration's final paragraph calls us to action. We resolve to act. We propose a revolution in conduct, and we will begin anew. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Next, Cindy Harden, followed by Wendy Leung, Italia Salvage, Peter Kaz, Jonathan Olman. Cindy Harden.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Let me turn that down. I'm here as usual, I'm always talking about Biona and often about interim stewardship. As we all know, this state is, I would say, in stasis about the future plans for this 577-acre ecological reserve on the west side of Los Angeles. I would dearly love to see more volunteer stewardship. That means people going in and pulling weeds. And usually, I speak generally. Today, I want to be quite specific about Area C. In Area C, grandfathered in, have been Little League fields, and they're well-loved by the community and have been in use for many, many years. Immediately adjacent to these Little League fields is habitat. I mean, it is on the reserve. That habitat, at the moment, is overrun with invasive plants like castor bean and mustard and fennel, the usual suspects. But then, just a little bit to the west of it is land that's below grade, and every single rain season, bernal ponds form there. There are willow trees, there's mulled fat, lots of habitat. With this Little League community, you've got a ready-made pool of volunteers that I know would be interested in helping to make this more habitat and less weed-choked land. With some educational signage, you've got a captive audience of people that might not necessarily be the type to attend a Coastal Commission meeting and speak. People who would benefit mightily from learning about this unique coastal wetland and have a stake in it. Because, you know, we're all stakeholders there, right? They're already stakeholders because they go to Little League games there. So, Area C, baseball field adjacent, volunteer stewardship, please consider that. Thank you. Thanks to all the good work you all do.
Thank you. Wendy Leung.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for your continued oversight of Sable's work in the coastal zone. I'm Wendy Leung. I'm with the Center for Biological Diversity, and I live here in the San Fernando Valley. And I was an Oxnard resident during the oil spill 10 years ago. And even though it was 10 years ago, I still remember how our local beaches were blackened and our marine life and birds and so many things were dying and suffering during that time. And it's with those memories that I come to address you and remind you that the Coastal Commission must use its full extent of its authority under the Coastal Act to ensure that we don't experience another catastrophic oil spill like that in the coastal zone again. The county predicted this pipeline would spill once every year and rupture once every four years, even with installation of valves that are intended to reduce spill volumes. I just wanted to stress that, once every year and a rupture every four years. We understand that the Coastal Commission is in litigation over Sable's unauthorized work on the pipelines, but the Commission must also require Sable to obtain a CDP, a coastal development permit, to restart this unsafe pipeline system and its associated infrastructure. Time is of the essence. Sable contends that it will restart the pipelines and associated SYU infrastructure by September. And no other agencies are providing the oversight, the environmental review, and transparency that's necessary to properly protect the coast, to protect public safety, and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Italia Salvage, Peter Kaz, Jonathan Olman, Andrew Swerdloff, Jenna McGovern.
Hi. My name is Jonathan Olman, and I'm the Santa Barbara Ventura Chapter Director of the Sierra Club. Several of our members and allies have come here today from cities up the coast to be with you today. Thank you for your efforts to stand up for the California coast. There appears to be a full assault on the environment in every corner of government these days. But history is long, and its singular memory will be of your enforcement of the California Coastal Act, and most notably, applying it for everyone, including Sable Offshore, a Texas company that has chosen to run roughshod over your own rules in what appears to be a strategy to act first and beg for forgiveness later, if at all. A decade ago, Texas-based Exxon and Plains Pipeline dramatically halted operations when a corroded pipeline burst, surging 450,000 gallons of crude into Santa Barbara Channel. Sable is betting our coast on the same corroded pipeline, but it's not their coast to gamble with. Please subject all activities in the coastal zone to a new coastal development permit, including restart of the pipeline. Letting Sable regulate itself is just too risky a bet. Thank you again for listening to the people of California and protecting this gem for all.
Thank you. I'm now seeing that Italia Salvage switched to Zoom instead of in-person, and I will remind those that may have just joined us that we're taking in-person speakers, followed by the Lohey Cove Sea Lion presentation, and then we're trailing all other Zoom speakers till after their regular agenda. Next is Peter Kaz, Andrew Swerdloff, Jenna McGovern, Nikki Taleby, Brady Bradshaw.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for opportunity to speak. I have a slide, oh, pictures, yes. Just want to give you updates on a project that I have in Newport Beach on a mooring permit holders. And I'm building this Jeep as a project, and I was hoping to use it as educational for less privileged kids. And this is also wheelchair accessible, wheelchair-friendly, so I can use it. And if the staff can direct me, how can I provide access for the kids or people with disabilities volunteering for nonprofit? That would be great. And at the same time, I would like, if you guys be in Newport Beach, I would like to give you guys a tour. And it has a great vibes, great energy. And at the same times, I can show you the challenges, the mooring, people on the mooring facing, to take, park their boat or take their, you know, boat on there and pick the lines. If you go next picture, do some comparison. Next picture, please, or next slide. And so, these are the, in the middle, you see the moorings. It's kind of difficult, challenging to get to them, and we have the, compared to that, we have the docks, residential docks, that is much easier, it's easy to access. And we have paying like almost triple or double the, with the double challenges that they have. At the same time, I would like to touch on, we have some issue with the, the city's trying to take away the leave-of-board permits eventually and by converting them to the license. So I was hoping the Coastal Commission can step in and take a look at that, what's happening in the, with the leave-of-boards that we have a lot of issues with. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Swerdloff, Jenna McGovern, Nikki Taleby.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Swerdloff. I'm here today representing California Affordable Lodging Solutions, or CALES. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to the mission of accelerating, expanding, and creating more affordable lodging along California's coastline. Myself and my co-founders of CALES have devoted most of our adult lives to real estate development projects and have seen firsthand the challenges of building affordable lodging along the coastline. I thank the Commission for its efforts in onsite mitigation, offsite mitigation, and in lieu fees to help develop more affordable lodging. Unfortunately, as we all know, it has been a very difficult battle in the last multiple decades to make that happen. I've experienced this firsthand. I created a company called Stay Open Hotels that was an innovative affordable lodging brand. We created the first-ever public-private partnership with the Port of San Diego and with the help of California Coastal Commission nudging the Port of San Diego to build more affordable lodging. We had in-lie fees available for that project, and we're converting a one-story building on Portland into a 240-bed affordable lodging project. Unfortunately, ultimately, the port terminated that project, but it was definitely a start to something that we can do. And my co-founders and I at CALES realized that we needed to really push more on this issue, and CALES, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, can be more involved in helping bridge the gap between the public and the private sector. And we hope to work more with the Commission to bring more affordable lodging along our coastline and help with onsite mitigation, offsite mitigation, and in lieu fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna McGovern, Nikki Taleby, Brady Bradshaw, Ella Bogdansky, and Steve Ray.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jenna McGovern, and I'm a UCSB student with the Environmental Affairs Board and the Greater Santa Barbara Coalition. Thank you for taking my comment. I'm here today to discuss the devastating Sable Offshore proposal. Your action in April was a huge win for us and a win in holding this corrupt company responsible for its harms to the environment. So I want to extend my gratitude and assure you that we are still here and still counting on you to be a force for us. It's disappointing and angering that Sable has continued its deceitful operations, yet it is entirely not a surprise. In an era where character, respect, and social responsibility seems hard to come by in our current political and corporate structures, Sable has proven itself to fit right in. Santa Barbara and our entire coastline can't handle a company like Sable polluting our water and neighborhoods, and we don't deserve it. As previously stated, this isn't a gamble to take. It's a known impact that this project has an annual spill rate if it restarts. I'm urging the same requirement as the others in this room have said. All activities in the coastal zone need to be subject to a new coastal development permit, including restart of the pipeline. We're counting on you as a California agency that is actually stepping up for us amidst a sea of regulators that are choosing to be silent. I am in full support of your power and efforts to stop this dangerous project that will irreparably damage our coastline. I appreciate your time and continued efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Taleby, Brady Bradshaw, Ella Bogdansky, Steve Ray.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for listening to talk, listening to us talk about Sable Offshore again. My name is Nikki Taleby, and I'm with UCSB's Environmental Affairs Board. I'm here with others who have spent 10 years doing this, and I just don't want that to be my future. You have all been thinking on this for a while, but this issue has gone on for too long, and further action must be taken. The Coastal Commission was created for situations exactly like this, so I ask you to hold strong and do not allow this pipeline to restart. We are watching one of the most beautiful coastlines on earth be yet again threatened by a project with no economic or structural integrity. We're all watching this issue, so please stand up for us and hold your ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Brady Bradshaw, Ella Bogdansky, Steve Ray.
Hello, Chair Harmon and Commissioners. Thank you again for your continued enforcement and other efforts to hold, uphold the California Coastal Act. We applaud your entire team's relentless work to fulfill the Coastal Commission's obligations to protect our coast and coastal communities from harms brought about by Sable's activities in the coastal zone. The Commission has broad delegation of authority under the Coastal Act to protect and preserve wildlife, marine fisheries, the natural environment, and communities along the California coast. Coastal Act requires a CDP for all development in the coastal zone. While the Commission has delegated much of its permitting authority over coastal development to local governments through certified local coastal programs, the Coastal Act specifically requires any developments located on tidelands, submerged lands, public trust lands, or any development which constitutes a major public works project or a major energy facility to obtain a CDP directly from the Coastal Commission. Many CDPs issued by local governments remain appealable to the Commission. Should local governments fail to enforce the requirements of the Coastal Act and its certified LCP, this Commission is authorized to step in. In our October letter to the Commission, we detail why a CDP is required for restart. We have not found any publicly available documentation that a CDP ever issued for this pipeline system or other elements of SYU operations, but the final development plan and CUP for the system reference what was then a forthcoming CDP 47 times. Given the county's failure to produce those documents and the significant modifications to the original pipeline operation, the Coastal Commission must require a CDP for restart of the pipeline and associated infrastructure in the coastal zone. Thank you so much for your consideration and your continued fight for our coast.
Thank you. Ella Bogdansky.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ella Bogdansky. Thanks for taking my comment. I'm here with Nature Nexus Institute on behalf of the Biona Wetlands. And I started my career there teaching field trips of school kids, and it was really amazing and beautiful to see how it inspires them and adults alike to take care of our oceans. And it's a really, the site is a special showpiece that demonstrates how we treat our waters inland and how that directly affects our oceans and our coastlines. And I also know that the public And I also know that the public has very little access to the site. Currently, it's in the form of special guided tours. And I talk to a lot of people about what I do there, and they're super curious. So I feel that there's a great opportunity. The site is a beautiful showpiece, and it's really a shame that it's locked up behind gates for most of the time. So I'm hoping that the Commission can support Nature Nexus and our efforts to increase public access and stewardship to the land. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Steve Ray. And then we'll move to our La Jolla Cove sea lion presentations.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and staff. Again, I apologize for the quality or lack of quality of my voice today. I want to talk to you about something different: money. The Commission always needs money, so, and you've been talking about it lately. As somebody who has founded or co-founded 18 nonprofit groups and seven businesses, I know a little something about raising money. Over the years in nonprofit field, I have raised somewhere between half and a full billion dollars. So I have a little experience. It's not the part of this work that I enjoy the most, but if you're gonna do it, you'd better do it well. To raise money, you need three things. You need to have a good message. You need to have a passionate group of people. And you need to not be afraid to ask for the money. And you have to make it easy on people in doing so. The Commission has a great, great story to tell, a great mission, a great cause for being in existence. It's also a nonprofit group. People can donate to the Commission, and it's fully tax deductible under the law. Most people don't know that. I took a survey, and nobody knew that, that I talked to. You can also find other ways that you can get corporate funds donated. You can have other nonprofits donate to you. Those avenues are available to you. And I and my associates are making an offer to you that we would be willing to work with your staff and you in that effort to try to raise more money. We've done a lot of different things and some creative things over the years to do that. And we're, we stand ready to try to help you and make it easier. We'll look forward to talking to you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Robyn Davidoff, and then Andy Field will follow up. Andy Field, please accept being promoted to a panelist. Robyn Davidoff, go ahead.
Hello. Sorry, I had trouble with my audio. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Next slide, please. I'm Robyn Davidoff. I'm the Sierra Club Seal Society Chair. And in April, the Commission approved the City of San Diego's update to the Long-Term Management Plan, allowing Rangers staff to point La Jolla Sea Lion Rookery to monitor the adjacent La Jolla Cove and make announcements on a bullhorn, asking tourists to stay back from sea lions, and create an incident report if harassment was witnessed. In May, June, and July, there's been little to no implementation, and thousands of daily visitors crowd around sea lions, pet them, and take selfies. Sorry, I'm getting something that says my visual background is loading. Can you see me?
We can't see you, but please just continue. We can hear you fine.
Okay. So where was I? Okay. So, next slide, please, then. So the SEAL Society averaged 40 volunteer hours weekly during May 1st to July 31st, keeping people and newborn sea lions apart. And this is not our job, and it's not sustainable. We observed Rangers during that time, and we found on this chart that there were little to no announcements in May, June, and July. And as you can see, in July, there were 26 announcements from Rangers. That's less than one per day, and only three from the lifeguards. Next slide, please. So what checks can be made in order to make sure that the city's successful in implementing their plan? Well, one is to require Park and Rec Senior Staff to conduct random weekly spot checks to at the La Jolla Cove and provide on-the-spot Ranger training if needed. And the CCC can also require monthly reports on, with the number of announcements made and incident reports made. Next slide, please. From our hours and hours of experience, the only thing that's really going to work is to staff a Ranger at the La Jolla Cove daily to keep people a safe distance from sea lions, and place a Ranger at the bottom of the stairs so they're visible and can be heard, and update the management plan with a monitoring frequency of 30 every 30 minutes if the previous item can't be done, and to make announcements in various languages and record them, and implement a protocol using cones and tape around a baby sea lion. For public safety, close one gate on one set of stairs, always keeping the other stairs open for public access.
Thank you. Andy Field.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andy Field. I'm the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department for the City of San Diego. Go on to the next slide, please. Today, I would like to speak on the status of the ongoing interactions between sea lions and people at La Jolla Cove. In many anecdotal observations, visitors have been seeing people interacting too closely with the wildlife to obtain photos, selfies, or just to watch their behaviors close up. There has been much dedicated and involved feedback from stakeholders at La Jolla Cove. And as a city, we thank them for their ongoing engagement and for their recommendations for operations at the Cove. Next slide, please. First and foremost, the city has no plans to close the Cove. The city instead plans to enhance onsite management. Next slide, please. As recommended by some stakeholders, the city is working to expand the existing park ranger role at La Jolla Cove. We have already started this by extending the role of the Point La Jolla Park Rangers to also patrol the Cove. The city is also in the process of hiring more park rangers, and we plan additional support at the Cove to come from those additional park rangers. Next slide, please. To ensure consistency of messaging, assigned park rangers at La Jolla Cove will engage by sharing a standard message for any people interacting too closely with wildlife, including sea lions, using a bullhorn as needed to ensure clarity. Human safety is our primary focus. Next slide. Stakeholders have also noticed an increase in tour bus visits to La Jolla Cove. The city will work with tour bus operators and tourism stakeholders to identify suitable drop-off points for tour buses to help more people visit the Cove. Next slide. The city also plans to improve the signage at La Jolla Cove. This will involve clarifying signage, reducing the clutter, and focusing message on safety. Our team will collaborate with stakeholders to develop these signs. Next slide. Another pathway we're exploring is adding cameras of the livestream so visitors can see the Cove prior to visiting it. Examples you see on the screen here include Hollywood Beach in Florida, and closer to home, the Elephant Seal Cam in San Simeon. Next slide. The city looks forward to serving park visitors, residents, business owners, stakeholders, and all regional visitors as we continue to fine-tune our approach to managing this valuable and precious resource. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for the time today. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks to the public for commenting and to the public who is waiting until this afternoon. And thank you very much to Mr. Field from the City of San Diego. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for comments, questions. Vice Chair Hart.
Thanks so much, Chair. I just wanted to appreciate that Mr. Field's presentation and thank them for working with staff in a more intensive way. And as a former parks professional, I know how hard it is to respond quickly to a situation like this. And it's just so great to see that they are ramping up, that they are hiring more Rangers, because it's danger, it's very dangerous. Obviously, it creates a huge danger for the sea lion population or the seal population, but it creates a huge danger for visitors. So it's, it's really important that the Rangers are there. As far as the record of announcements go and that sort of thing, I really look to the professionals as they get more staffing to determine what's appropriate there. So I really look forward to further reports on their progress and just want to express our appreciation.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to ask Mr. Fields, he mentioned that we're seeing or anticipate increased visitorship via buses. And I'm curious if there's, could be consideration for including an education component before folks exit the buses as a requirement. I think that's a great way to have a captured audience that gets a little education before stepping off into that environment. And hopefully, that bleeds over into the folks who were not on a bus but joined as they see folks stay back and her, perhaps share some of that education. It could be helpful. Just a recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
There was some discussion or some comments around, excuse me, Newport Beach, not the moorings and that situation, as well as the docks. I just want to recommend that folks who want to communicate that to this Commission should also communicate that to the State Lands Commission as well, directly. They have meetings, they have communication. Please do so.
Commissioner Pressiato.
Well, I absolutely appreciate the participation of the public, the interested parties in the wildlife. I just wanted to comment, our colleagues in the City of San Diego are going through extraordinary measures to keep their entire city running. And so there are parks in every neighborhood in our, in the City of San Diego. There are resources in every neighborhood. And I'm pleasantly surprised that a new investment can be made in the La Jolla Cove. I'm wondering if, if it will become necessary to figure out other mechanisms to handle this matter in the future. I know everybody's looking for balance, access, protecting both the wildlife and the human wildlife. Some of them are wild, we've seen, in visiting there. But I just think, I'm glad that they're able to do this, but I think it's really challenging for a city of their size with the financial problems they're having to tend to and do this. So they are to be commended for this extraordinary effort they're taking and bringing out more support. I'm certain that my council friends from the City of San Diego can enumerate hundreds and hundreds of extraordinary priorities in their communities that also need resources. So this is very impressive that such a thing can occur in this context. The City of San Diego reported, or you may have all heard, three or $400 million budget shortfalls in addition to other challenges. And so this is impressive. And with regard to the tour buses and things of that nature, maybe the commercialized component can somehow be licensed. If they are going to visit the wildlife and impact the wildlife, maybe that might be another way to source either volunteers or a cadre of wildlife professionals who can be advising and making suggestions to people as they interact with the seals. Thank you. Or should not interact with the seals, I should say.
Thank you. Any further? Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for all our public speakers this morning. Understanding that the wheels of government turn slowly at times, I heard a lot about, with regard to San Diego and the sea lions, and while not to sound overly critical, and of course, I'm going to sound critical, I'm just curious about what we heard about our plans to take action. And my first meeting was in San Diego in May, where there were legitimate concerns raised by a lot of people about the pups and how close people were and breeding season and all those things. And, you know, I, I don't quite understand why nothing has been done between May and here we are now in the middle of August. You know, no A-frame signs, no cones, no nothing to show a clear separation of where folks should be and where they shouldn't be. And I certainly understand San Diego's renowned for its sea lion colonies, and it's a big source of tourism, and people are fascinated by that. I certainly understand all that. And I think access should be afforded to those to witness this beautiful part of nature on the stunning San Diego coastline. But safety is always paramount, and the fact that nothing, at least from our presentations, has been done at all outside of an occasional increase of, of, excuse me, an officer out there, I'm just, fundamentally, I don't understand how that is all that's been done up to this point since May. So I don't know if the, if the city wants to speak to that. I certainly appreciate you being here. I certainly appreciate what you're doing, understanding all the challenges. And it's certainly easy for me to sit up here and to throw stones, but I just, I look at what, in my mind, is not that large of an ask or a reach for a city in the name of safety to put something up to show a clear delineation of where people should not cross.
Well, I think we're certainly very grateful for the collaboration. That's a critical, critical step. Would staff like to respond to Commissioner Jackson or to the discussion in general?
Thank you, Commissioners, Commissioner Jackson. I don't have a direct response, obviously, to your queries. We could see if the city wanted to respond and just wanted to note, we're, you know, we continue to work with the city and follow this. We've talked with them a lot since May about how do we, you know, keep things moving, given all the constraints that they have, personnel, budget, all those things. How do, I agree with you, it's a, it is a public safety and a wildlife safety concern. So I, just to say, we are, we are continuing to work with them and trying to push some action within, within the realm of possibility for the city, and we'll continue to do that. But I, we don't, I don't have specific information for you.
I understand. Understand. Appreciate the collaboration. And again, we heard a lot about what we're planning to do, and here we are several months after this issue first came to, I mean, not the Commission writ large, but at least to, you know, my first meeting in May. So I'm, I'm just concerned that nothing more has been done, at least from what we've been told, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you again to the public and to Mr. Field for participating this morning. So that brings us to Item 5, the Consent Calendar. Move to Mr. Schwing when they're ready. Thank you.
All right. So that does take us on to Item 5, which is the Consent Calendar for all districts. On the agenda today, there's one project from the City of San Clemente. Conditions are acceptable to the applicants. There's no opposition, so staff's recommending that matter be approved on the consent calendar.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any expertes on this item? Okay, no expertes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
There are no speakers.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone wish to remove this from the consent calendar? All right. Well, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. That is a motion by Commissioner Kelly, a second by Commissioner Bochko. Excuse me. Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, the consent calendar is adopted. And now we will move to those items that have been removed from the regular calendar, please.
Thank you. So today, we have items from Humboldt County, Orange County, and San Diego that we're recommending be moved to consent, and I'll go over that list. That's Item 8b, CDP application from Sequoia Investments for some dock enhancements in Humboldt Bay. Item 10a, the Dana Point LCP zoning code IP reconciliation time extension. Item 12c, the City of Newport Beach's public works project for a new ADA pathway near the wedge in Newport Beach. Item 14a, the City of Carlsbad's Housing Element Rezone Amendment and Companion. Item 14b, the Aura Circle Open Space Rezone. Item 14c, City of San Diego's LCP amendment on their transit priority area parking reform. Item 14d, also the Item 14D, also the companion amendment from the city of San Diego, their housing action package 2.0. Item 14E, the city of San Diego Land Use Plan Amendment related to DeAnza, that's just an LCP time extension. Item 15A, the Olneck application in Mission Beach for a new single-family residence and ADU. And item 15B, the Carlsbad Buena Vista Creek Maintenance. I do want to note, there is correspondence on item 12C, that's the ADA pathway from Newport Beach. On 14B, Carlsbad's Aura Circle Open Space Rezone. And item 14E, the time extension on DeAnza. Those were all in favor of these proposals. On item 14A, the Carlsbad Housing Element Rezone, we want to note, the property owner sent a letter, one of the property owners involved there sent a letter that we received last night or perhaps just this morning where they wanted to make sure that even with the suggested modifications, that the project site that they're in ownership of could still provide the density that was required. And there was a response from the city and we can affirm that the suggested modifications would allow them to do so in terms of that yield. Staff also received comments on items 14C and D, the city of San Diego's two LCP amendments related to parking requirements and housing. These comments expressed general opposition to the city's proposal regarding elimination of parking requirements in transit priority areas. The city's proposal here is in alignment with the state law adopted through AB 2097 and as outlined in the staff report, suggestive modifications are recommended to address the public access and recreation issues associated with that. So staff did not identify any changes to our recommendation necessary to respond and so we're continuing to recommend those two matters be approved on consent. Last, there is an addendum on item 15A, the Olneck Project in Mission Beach, and that was to require removal of encroachments into the public right-of-way, which the applicant has agreed to implement. So with that, staff recommends these items get moved to the consent calendar and approved per the staff recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwing. Are there any expertes to report on any of these items? Commissioner Pressiato.
I don't know how much of an experte it is, but I received an email yesterday from a supporter of the ADA improvement in the Newport Beach project. It's the 5-24-0751 that I then forwarded to staff.
Great, thank you very much. And I have an experte to report on that same item, 12C, on Tuesday, August 11th. At 8:35 PM, excuse me, at 8:35 PM, I spoke via phone, Tuesday, the 12th, excuse me, spoke via phone with Don Schmitz on behalf of the city of Newport Beach very briefly, where he indicated his agreement with the staff recommendation. Okay, with that, are there any public commenters who wish to speak to any of the items?
Yes, we have a number of people available with questions across all the items. We have two that I'm seeing that wish to speak. We have Don Schmitz for item 12C, and he has a short presentation, I believe.
Good morning, Commissioners, Don Schmitz on behalf of the city of Newport Beach. Did I hear correctly, all the correspondence was, all the correspondence was in favor? We need a taller microphone. And there's an old adage, don't sit and make a presentation on a yes. But I do just want to briefly say that we're very grateful for the cooperation and coordination work of your staff. This is a critical vertical access way to the iconic beach of the Wedge, which is world famous, and this will provide ADA access so folks can go down and watch the surfers risk their lives against the jetty. We do have a presentation, but I don't think it's necessary. I just want to reaffirm that the city of Newport Beach has, over the decades, shown a real commitment to facilitating public access. So I am available for any questions that you may have. And if you're dying to see the PowerPoint presentation, I'm happy to give it. Thank you for your time.
We have it right here.
And then the other speaker we're able to find is David Thompson for item 14B. David Thompson, you should be able to unmute.
All right, fantastic, thank you very much. And I am able to unmute, hopefully you can hear me. Good morning, Commissioners, I'm David Thompson, a Carlsbad property owner, and I support the open space designation for the requested specific conditions, with the requested specific conditions ensuring passive management with no trails. First, legal precedent supports this request. Section 30,240 of the Coastal Act requires ESHA protection against any significant disruptions of habitat values with only uses dependent on those resources allowed within ESHA. The Boltsachica Court decision confirms that ESHA receive uniform treatment and protection regardless of their condition. Your own precedent at La Jolla Children's Pool demonstrates that public access is subordinate to protecting fragile coastal resources. Second, this site contains federally threatened species. The California gnat catcher requires large undisturbed habitat areas. The site has five acres of Deegan Coastal Sage Scrub habitat reduced by 80% regionally. Even well-meaning trails fragment critical breeding areas. Third, the seasonal restrictions are scientifically necessary. The breeding season runs from February 15th to August 30th, and any public access should at least be prohibited during this critical period to comply with the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. Fourth, perpetual protection is achievable. The city should record deed restrictions under Civil Code Section 815.2B, designating this as a passive preserved, preserve, excuse me, managed solely for habitat values, not recreation. Staff report emphasizes ecological connectivity to Aguahedeuna Lagoon. And I think that probably concludes my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no other speakers.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, do any Commissioners wish to remove any of the items from consent? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Some motion by Commissioner Pressiato, a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, so adopted. Thank you. Okay, and that brings us to item seven, the North Coast DDR.
Good morning, Chair Herman and Commissioners. Item seven is the Deputy Director's Report for the North Coast District, which includes one waiver and one immaterial amendment this month. Staff is not aware of any opposition, and we are asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any items in this report. We are available for questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any expertes? And any speakers for this report?
No speakers.
Okay, do three or more Commissioners object to any item in the Deputy Director's Report? Seeing no objections, the commission concurs. Okay, next, we are at item 8A, I believe.
8A was withdrawn.
You're right.
8B moved to consent. So we are on item nine, which is the Deputy Director's Report for Orange County. Do you want to report? There are three CDP time extensions and three waivers for projects. In Orange County, there's no known opposition, and we're asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the waivers or the extensions in the report.
Great, thank you. Any expertes? Any public speakers?
We have one available for comments, or available for questions, that's it.
Great, thank you. Do three or more Commissioners object to any item in the report? Okay, seeing no objections, the commission concurs. Now we are at 11A, I believe. Thank you.
That is correct, thank you. So item 11A is an appeal out of the city of Laguna Beach, and Janet Torres with our Long Beach office will be joining us remotely to do the staff presentation. So I believe there is a PowerPoint, if we could bring that up. And Janet, when you're ready to go, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Item 11A is a substantial issue hearing for the appeal of a local CDP approved by the city of Laguna Beach to convert a temporary pedestrian plaza into a permanent plaza and the closure of Lower Forest Avenue to vehicular traffic. The applicant is the city of Laguna Beach and the appellants are Village Laguna and Friends of Forest Avenue. Next slide, please. The project is located on the lower forest, on Lower Forest Avenue between Forest Avenue and South Coast Highway and the intersection of Forest Avenue and Glenary Street in the city of Laguna Beach in Orange County. This portion of Forest Avenue has been a pedestrian plaza known as the promenade, closed to vehicular traffic since 2020 to support businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic. The areas surrounding this lower portion of Forest Avenue are primarily dining, retail, art, and park uses, serving both residents and visitors. Next slide, please. The city-approved project involves designating the existing temporary pedestrian plaza as permanent by removing the existing asphalt pavement, curb, and gutters, adding drainage improvements consisting of 15-foot-wide trench drains on either side of the street and permeable surfaces, adding brick pavers, landscape, and lighting improvements, raising the street to meet the grade of the sidewalks, creating areas for art installations, and adding seats and tables for outdoor dining and gathering for the general public to use. As part of the planning around this project and meeting other goals, the city has expanded transit services, improved parking infrastructure, and made existing parking spaces in the downtown area available to the public, which were not previously open to all visitors of the area. The appeal identifies three contentions, which are limited to the adequacy of the city to mitigate for the loss of parking and the ability for the design to manage flood hazards and fit into the existing character of the community. Next slide, please. The appellant's first contention is that the city's action is not sufficiently protective of public access because it will result in the permanent loss of 48 parking spaces in an already parking-deficient downtown area, and it is inconsistent with the certified downtown-specific plan, which did not envision or recommend the permanent closure of Forest Avenue. Furthermore, according to the appellants, the city failed to follow its own parking study. While the project will result in the removal of 48 parking spaces on Lower Forest Avenue, the city has provided a robust package of alternative parking and transit options to offset the loss. The city reclassified 30 parking spaces at the nearby public library, which will be available to the general public while the library is closed, and leased seven previously private commercial spaces on Ocean Avenue for residents with a shopper's permit to use, as shown in this slide. In addition, the city has made several, several public transit improvements, including expansions of the Free Laguna Local and Laguna Trolley, which are available to all visitors and residents to mitigate for vehicle demand in the downtown and throughout the city. In addition, a recent award by OCTA of $7.2 million to extend the trolley and on-demand services will further enhance these, enhance the public transit. Next slide, please. The appellant's second contention is that the city did not adequately address the 100-year flood hazard and the project's capacity to withstand such flooding, which is inconsistent with the land use element policies that require that analysis. While the city did commission a hydrology and hydraulics report by SOMAS, the study was limited to examining only the 25-year occurrence and determined that the current design of the project was adequate. However, the project is located on a floodplain and must demonstrate compliance with both the city's regulations and those of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which required an analysis of its potential capacity to handle larger storms. To ensure the project's consistency with FEMA and city floodplain regulations, the project is conditioned such that the city's work permit may not be issued until the 100-year storm analysis is conducted and the floodplain administrator has issued a floodplain development building permit. Furthermore, the current proposed design considers flood hazards and provides flow capacity and drainage system improvements, including additional landscaped areas, tree wells, and permeable pavement. Next slide, please. Finally, the appellant's third contention is that the city's review of the project did not adequately evaluate adverse impacts on coastal resources, hazards, and the character of the surrounding area, which is inconsistent with various sections of the LCP. The intent of the downtown-specific plan is to identify the need for increasing the enjoyment opportunities of the vibrant downtown while providing for pedestrian safety in a visitor-serving portion of the city. As stated, the proposed development as conditioned takes into account flooding hazards, access, and recreation, and community character of the downtown area. Additionally, the reduced amount of vehicular traffic will also decrease the polluting particles and fluids generated by vehicles traveling and parking on the street. The increase in pervious surfaces and reduction in vehicular traffic will reduce some runoff generated on-site and improve water quality by allowing stormwater runoff to be filtered before reaching the Pacific Ocean. Overall, the project provides for a reduction of two adverse impacts on coastal resources from vehicles and road infrastructure and improves the character of the surrounding area. The city provided sufficient analysis for the review criteria of its decision to approve the proposed project. Next slide, please. In closing, staff concurs with the findings made by the city and believes the city provided adequate legal support for its decision to approve the subject project. Staff therefore recommends the commission find no substantial issue with regard to the contentions on which the appeal was filed. The motion to accomplish this can be found on page four of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any expertes on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and go to the appellant. Three minutes, please. Good morning, sir. If you could please turn the mic on, just look that button, and please state your name, sir. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Merrill Anderson, and I'm president of Village Laguna. We are here today as partners with you, sharing a commitment to protect and enhance California's coast and ocean. We need your help in upholding the very principles we stand for. Laguna Beach is a success story that we all share. It is the only entire city in the country designated by the National Park Service as a historic American landscape. Next slide, please. We ask that you find that our appeal raises a substantial issue violating our local coastal plan. Next slide, please. Here you can see the substantial reduction in parking requirements between the previous and current downtown-specific plans. Laguna has over 6 million visitors a year, and these reductions were very controversial. Next slide, please. To mollify the public, the revised downtown-specific plan included a provision that the city cannot remove public spaces if the parking occupancy level will exceed 85%. The Coastal Commission approved that hard number in 2020. Next slide, please. The parking consultant for the downtown-specific plan found occupancy levels frequently in excess of 85% in summer. Those are the red areas on the chart that you see. Next slide, please. DKS gathered its data for on-street parking in the off-season, late October. DKS concluded that the parking, public parking occupancy levels mostly remained under 85%. In other words, exceeded 85%. Next slide, please. Four days ago, the city changed its mind, saying DKS found that the threshold is under 85%. The addendum copied the language without verifying the claim. Claim is false. The closure of Lower Forest Avenue is prohibited. We ask the city to comply with the downtown-specific plan. Next slide, please. The plain language of the LCP zoning code clarifies that a project must comply with the general plan elements to comply with the LCP. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The city never evaluated the project for conformity with the safety element. The city's letter and the addendum say the city will do it later, but the city is asking for a finding of LCP conformity now. Next slide, please. Well, how much worse will the floods be when the entire street is raised to the level of store entrances? We've had three 100-year floods in the last 55 years. Next slide, please. We submit a petition with 875 signatures opposing the promenade, including over 100 business owners. What's at stake today is not just Laguna Beach, but it's a precedent for other coastal communities. You've always been our backstop. We need you to have our back today. Uphold the appeal. Grant the de novo hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all you do, too.
Thank you. Okay, is there a representative from the city?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Orgill, and I am mayor pro tem of Laguna Beach. We support staff's recommendation for a finding of no substantial issue. Next slide. There you go. The yellow box on the slide is of the single block that is the promenade today. It's a single block where people matter more than cars. All around that box, there are cars and more cars. So the place for people has become sacred. I'm going to talk about why the promenade works today. I offer this as a 40-year resident of Laguna Beach and after two and a half years on city council member. Next slide. I'm on the promenade four to five days a week. I'm there because it's where people gather, people stop, eat, talk. They shop, they run into friends as well as strangers. The international voices on the promenade are remarkable. Visitors and residents take photos with the artwork, get ice cream, they linger, they listen to buskers. Next slide, please. The new project design enhances this gathering space without impacting hydrology. Indeed, our hydrology study shows that in a 25-year storm, the infiltration is better than today's conditions. Our parking studies done in both peak and off-peak times show that we do not exceed the 84% to 86% utilization rate. Remember that this interim project has been in place since 2020. Remember, too, that we have our free trolley. Our trolley stops and microtransits are all around the promenade. Next slide, please. I value the appellant's voices. They have a different perspective, but I respectfully, it's not predominant. Our June 12 hearing on the promenade had a packed house. This was after 13 focus groups, a separate city council meeting, and one joint meeting of council and the planning commission. Yes, the appellant presented a petition, and I don't minimize that, but I wish you were in the room to hear the promenade's support. These were folks who came to City Hall in person, who took time out of their evening to attend a council meeting. We heard from all ages, but the voices were, the voices of the kids were the best. We heard the promenade has a new energy, where music plays, where art lives, where families stroll, a place to walk, meet up, eat, and just enjoy being without cars. I support any opportunity for more people and less cars. Next slide, please. It's one block, one block for people. The city staff is online and available should you have any technical questions about the appeal, such as parking or hydrology. I respectfully urge you to adopt staff's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any qualified speakers?
Yes, and I'm also confirming that we have Laguna Beach city staff online available for questions. We have three speakers sign up that are qualified. We have Tony Iseman in person, and then Brian Men and Catherine Jerka on Zoom. Tony Iseman?
I think it's still morning, is it? My name is Tony Iseman, and I served on the city council for 24 years, four times mayor, and also had the privilege of being a coastal commission during that period. I've devoted my career to environmental activism, both inside and outside our little town. I moved there in 1970, and it was historic then, and it's much more historic now. And it's something we need to hold on to. It's a real concern because the businesses, not just along Forest Avenue, but all along the coast highway, are very concerned about the promenade and the lack of parking that is potentially there if we do this another way. 100 business owners signed a petition that says no, no, to the promenade. It is, um, it's a little bit like Disneyland, and Disneyland's not very far from Laguna. They can go to Disneyland, but they'll never be able to find anything like the promenade. The construction of the promenade will have a huge impact on the businesses that are there right now. And one of the things about our businesses is they're one of a kind. We have tried not to have chains in our downtown, but it's going to be hard for those businesses to survive the incredible instruction, construction that this will take. So we're hoping that you will vote to keep the history in Laguna there. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Mena, I haven't been able to promote you as a panelist, but you should be able to unmute as an attendee right now.
Yes, my name is Brian Mena. Do you have my, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm a land planner, a 60-year resident and qualified individual for, to assess projects. This project is probably the worst project I've ever seen in my career as far as not meeting any public review, and this project is a major public works project as defined by the California Coastal Commission. It requires an EIR and a SEQA. The city has skirted this issue by using a new untested law by CalChans as a slow streets program to bypass any public input. The project as designed has no ability to service police, fire, staging areas, and access, which was formerly the road that they had closed off. So if there's an incident, they have to park on the other north-south streets that are around, which would cause probably one- to two-hour backups in case of medical aids or fires. The permanent substandard alignment for the road that has been arranged goes into a detour in the alley around Forest Avenue, but that, this is one of three streets that Laguna Beach has. We only have three grid streets that are east-west that goes to the beach. They're taking one-third of it and blocking it off and putting us into a detour. The, this removes the vital access and viability for us residents to get to downtown. There are 90 empty stores in Laguna Beach because of no parking, no direct access, and high rents. This violates the Laguna Beach General Plan Policy 6H, that a one-for-one parking replacement should be considered for any plan. The commission staff suggested strive for no net loss on public parking spaces when the 2019 Village entrance was done. There's no budget, no EIR, no SEQA, and we've lost 100 spaces in downtown in the last six years with the last two city projects. Where will these 7.4 million visitors that come from the $1 million a year the city spends to bring people in? No, they do not come in, they come in cars, they don't come-
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And then we had one other speaker, Catherine Jerka, but we're unable to find them-
I'm here in person.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Surprise. Good morning, Chair Harmon and Commissioners. It's really a pleasure to be here in front of you. I admire your work very much. I was not actually expecting to be able to speak because I thought the rules of a no substantial issue sort of limited us to one speaker. I did just want to point out a couple of things. I urge you to find a substantial issue and grant the de novo hearing. The appellant could only really focus on the objective issues. It just wasn't possible to go into the design review consideration and what it means to Laguna to lose the historic gateway to its downtown, this 100-year-old street that is really the centerpiece of Laguna. I, I'm very sympathetic to the idea of more pedestrian-friendly spaces, not just in Laguna, not just in our downtown, but all over. I do want to point out, though, that when the DSP was revised in 2020, you received 100 letters opposing the revision, and a lot of it had to do with the concerns about the new parking standards. You saw a slide that showed that they were greatly reduced for new businesses. And the, the measure that was added as a, as a kind of, as a compromise, or to assure the public that they would not lose too many parking spaces, was that 85% occupancy level threshold. It is not 84% to 86%, it is 85%. It is written clearly into the DSP. It is a requirement, it is not a suggestion. It may seem like a technicality, it doesn't feel that way to the community. The city did not do an adequate parking study for the project, and so I urge you to, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. No more speakers.
Great, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing and return to our staff. If they have any closing thoughts.
Thanks very much. So the issues that were raised here are, of course, addressed in detail in the staff report and the staff report addendum. I did want to note that, you know, the city is uniquely positioned to rely on its excellent public transit system that it has in place. There is remote parking and a shuttle system that they have in place that is really something unique to that community and really helps out here. So we continue to not have any concerns with this particular proposal, and we're recommending no substantial issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll bring it to the commission if there are, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to our speakers. I quite frankly love what Laguna Beach and so many other cities throughout our great state, blessed with some of the best weather in the world, are envisioning to improve the outdoor experience for visitors and residents alike. I appreciate the steps that Laguna Beach has taken to mitigate against the parking challenges. And as we move forward, we cannot let parking be the reason so many good projects fail to move forward. I think this proposed project will enhance the experience for both visitors and residents alike, bringing lasting benefits that reflect Laguna's unique character and expanding opportunities for more to enjoy, so, thank you.
Vice Chair Hart.
Thanks. I want to align myself with the excellent comments from Commissioner Jackson and appreciate your articulate, your excellent articulation of how you feel about this, which I agree with. I do have a couple of questions for staff or the city. First of all, it sounds like one of the main parking is going to be at the library and I'm, and when the library's closed. So I was just curious, is the library open every day? What are the hours of the library, and when will that lot be available?
I don't have that particular information, but the city is available-
Yeah, the city staff, I think, is online, too. Chris said. Can you get them, or? The mayor was here, but city staff's online, I think. I can move on to my other questions. And-
Let me see if I can get them on Zoom for you real quick.
Yeah, I'm Dave Kiff, I'm the city manager. We do have some technical staff. One would be Tom Perez or Anthony Viera.
I can look for Anthony real quick.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just give my second question, and he can respond to both. The other is, I was just curious what kind of shops and restaurants are along there, and also what kind of provisions have been made for disabled parking?
Okay, Anthony's moved to panelists. We can unmute him.
I can't hear you.
Anthony's been moved to panelists. I've asked him to unmute so he can answer your question.
And what's his name?
Anthony Viera.
Anthony Viera. Okay, that'd be great.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. This is Anthony Viera, planning manager for the city of Laguna Beach. The city's library hours are as follows. The library is open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Fridays and Saturdays. Library is fully closed on Sundays. The 30 parking spaces available at the library property would be available for general public use outside of the hours of operation. It's about what include weekday and Saturday evenings and all day on Sundays. And I apologize, but as I was joining as a panelist, I was momentarily disconnected from this meeting, so if I could have that second question one more time, I would be happy to provide you with a response.
I couldn't quite hear what you said, but it sounded like you didn't hear my other questions?
Yeah, here is the second question.
I heard, I did hear your answer, and so it sounds like they're available in the evenings and on Sunday, and that's the only alternative parking that the city has provided, or is going to provide?
The city, that was a recent addition to the downtown parking supply. On January 1st, there will be an additional 10 parking spaces that become available as the city's parklit program sunsets on January 1st in accordance with state law. Otherwise, what I would point out is that the city is committed to continually improving on its alternative modes of transportation solutions. We do, on an annual basis, update the summer parking management plan to optimize offsite parking lots. We do have four peripheral lots that are very well connected to our trolley system, and we do enhance the trolley service each summer to accommodate those demands. Currently, the city is in the early stages of preparing preliminary plans for a potential future project involving a parking structure in or around the site of the Village entrance as well.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is that if you have, I don't know what the library lot is like, but if you're really serious about using that for parking, you might need to put some kind of a parking, you know, I have no idea about it, so just, it's good that you're thinking about it. And with regard to the city lots that the trolley runs from, are they generally have parking for people?
Yes, yes, they do.
And so it's available on a general basis? There's plenty of parking, would you say, at those lots?
I would say so.
Okay.
And that includes lots outside of Laguna Beach as well that the city uses. More recently, we've also been piloting a program for dynamic parking signage that expresses in real-time parking availability. We are testing that out this summer with a lot at Laguna Canyon Road, so that as you're driving into town, you can see that sign, not only identify that there is available parking on the, on the site, but also providing that turnout opportunity as you're driving into, into the city of Laguna Beach.
Okay. And I, this can go to staff or to you, sir. I wanted to know what provisions were made for disabled parking for folks that are unable to park at the library lot, even if it's available or somewhere. What are those provisions? And also, if you could just describe, are these mainly tourist shops and cafes, or what's on that block? And that, that could go to our staff, too, if you'd like. Either one.
Whoever knows.
For the accessibility question, I might ask Tom Perez, city engineer, who's also on this call, to provide a response. In terms of the tenant mix today, there is a mix of restaurants and retail merchants. Those retail stores include art galleries, and there are also some second-floor offices in this general area. So generally, a mix of uses that are both residents and visitors serving.
Okay. And if you could, if someone could respond to the disabled parking provision, that would be good.
And as, as far as the ADA parking, and perhaps the, the city could enhance the, our understanding, but there is, there is parking throughout the downtown area that provides the ADA parking, as well as the transit provides that access as well. Not sure if the city has anything more specific.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Thomas-
My name's Thomas Perez, I'm the city engineer for Laguna Beach. Regarding ADA parking spaces, I will point out there is one ADA space available in the library parking lot. We also have two ADA spaces at nearby public parking, which is roughly 175 feet away from the promenade that we refer to as the mermaid lot. We have an additional accessible parking space in the public lot, number, two public lots, 3 and 4, which are also immediately adjacent to the promenade project. So those existing spaces will remain available and provide accessible parking in the immediate area.
Okay. The chair just asked me to ask you, since I'm the one talking. Are the trolleys also ADA outfitted so that people can get on and off the trolleys? He's thinking.
That, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the trolleys.
Hi, Tom and Anthony, Dave Kiff again. The answer is yes, they're all equipped with lifts and accessible to persons with disabilities.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only, of the entire project, that's the one concern I have. And I would just urge the city to monitor if the library parking, the one spot is full, or people are unable, you know, to access the new pedestrian mall. Which, by the way, does it exist today? Because somebody...
It does exist today, it's been in place since June of 2020.
That it's been closed, but not completely retrofitted? Or it has been already?
That's correct, it's been closed, so it has curbs and street markings. And the proposed project is to smooth that out and make it all pavers and DG.
And you haven't gotten any complaints or lawsuits, God forbid, from the ADA community?
Knock on wood, no.
Yeah, you would know. All right, thank you, those are all my questions.
Commissioner Baczka.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Hart, because those are some questions I wouldn't have thought to ask. I think the key here is the LCP, right? That's what we should be conforming.
That's right, that is the standard review.
And originally, you know, looking at the numbers, I feel like I'm reverbing here. Originally, looking at the numbers, it appeared that we were doing that, that we were, that the LCP was being followed. With the information about the library, which is 30 of the new spaces being closed, I would say most of the time, which is all day long and Saturdays, how is that accommodated in the 85% demanded by the LCP?
Well, to my knowledge, the parking study did account for that circumstance.
How? I mean, it's not available, so something else has to be available during those hours to make up that number of 30, I would assume.
Well, the 85% was not, I don't believe, counting on the parking...
I'm sorry, what?
I don't believe... I don't believe it was counting on that additional parking.
But that's what you said, it has the additional parking.
It was looking at the parking as it currently exists. But perhaps, Janet, if you have some additional information about that, please go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to note that in the DSP, there is a mention that there is an excess of parking in the downtown area. It's about the distribution of the parking. And with the different transit modes, it connects people to where the parking is so they can put their cars in the parking areas where it's available, get on either the trolley or the on-demand service, depending on where they are, and be brought to the downtown.
So you're comfortable that we are in conformance with the LCP? That's my only concern.
Yes, we are.
Okay, because otherwise, I'm enthusiastic about this project, having come, you know, from Santa Monica where we saw a promenade until COVID was actually very, very successful. You know, it's a nice oasis in a city, especially a tourist city, where people don't have to worry about, you know, crossing the street and getting hit by a car. And I think as a commission, we've talked quite often now over the last several years that parking has to become something that is not a primary, I think Commissioner Jackson said this, a primary issue in improving projects because we have a lot more people and way too many cars. So everything that you've told me now, I feel much more comfortable, so, thank you.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify on parking. My familiarity with this area, so you're going to close from Glen Air down to PCH, right? That's the area, which has nice shops on it. I think Hobie's is there, there's a really nice home place that I'd like to get pillow covers. But, so, but my understanding is that the parking in this area is for commercial parking. This is, I wanted to clarify for the rest of the commission that this is not beach access parking. This is for commercial parking in this area. And that's the thing that's under discussion. So I just wanted to make that clear for the rest of the commission. And in terms of the flood issue, it seems to me if you're going to be, you're going to be replacing an impervious surface of the road with a pervious surface of pavers and DG, wouldn't that be an asset for flood resilience? That would be the other point I made there. So I think it's the way the, it's up to the city to deal with the commercial viability of their downtown, which is, I totally understand, is of concern to folks, and I really respect your voices there. But what's in front of the commission in terms of consistency with the LCP and beach access and, you know, water management, I think they've, I think the staff has determined that it's consistent with what's in the LCP.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to clarify in terms of the parking in that area. The parking isn't assigned necessarily to commercial or beach, but it is shorter term. So in that way, it's more oriented to serving the businesses in that area. But Main Beach is right there, it's a very popular beach. And these parking spaces are certainly used for visiting the beach. But you would tend to want to use the spaces where there's longer-term parking at the more remote lots, and then further up on, up the road from the promenade.
So if people dash down to the beach and come back in an hour, in a couple of hours or something, but it's not all-day beach parking?
That's right.
Is what the point I was, I was trying to get some clarification on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pressiato.
Pardon me, I'm going to pass, because I was going to ask about the comment from the speakers about the public safety concerns. And I think the city manager's presence just gives me, alleviates my concerns that they have planned that out, so I'm going to pass.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Chair Harmon. I just wanted to mention, I didn't disclose an ex parte. I received an email from the city manager, who used to be my city manager. We talked about this project coming before us, but just reiterated some of the items in the staff report. I just wanted to make mention, and I think this was, you know, elaborate further on some of the comments that my colleagues had previously made, that it feels, in a way, that what is happening in Laguna Beach is actually a great model for what we want to see more of our communities doing with respect to creative solutions around transit, you know, parking strategies, being very proactive around using multiple modes to move people to and from around the community and not just relying on building more and more parking. And I think as we've started, you know, in a lot of jurisdictions, we're starting to do, you know, more in-depth parking studies and looking at, you know, the studies of human behavior around how are people mode-shifting and that last-mile connection for getting to where you're trying to go. We're really seeing a dramatic shift in how people are able to make the decision to get out of their car and where we're seeing things going in the future. And so I think, you know, in addition to the fact that we have some great studies that we're relying on here and that this is clearly, you know, within the confines of the LCP, I think that this is a model that we should really be, you know, celebrating and looking at the on-demand transit services and the other things that they're doing. And I think this is a great project because it's going to get people out into the public realm, out of cars, and into experiencing community and being, having a relationship with, you know, the beach that I think, you know, doesn't exist for folks. So that I think this is a great enhancement and want to see us move forward in supporting this.
Commissioner Wilson. Great, please.
Anyone who's been following this board for a while knows how I feel about this, so I'll just move forward and thank my fellow commissioners for their wonderful comments. I move that the commission determine that appeal number A-5-LGB-25-0018 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under 3063 of the Coastal Act.
Second.
So motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Pressiato. Any objections to unanimous consent? Seeing none, no substantial issue has been found. Now we move to item 11B, please.
Thank you. And there is a staff presentation on this matter. And Jeff Palm with our Long Beach office is going to do that presentation.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. Item 11B is a substantial issue hearing of an appeal of a local CDP approved by the city of Laguna Beach for the construction of a new fire station. The applicant is the city of Laguna Beach, and the appellant's are Ann Kristof, Todd Hedrickson, and Jamie Hedrickson. Next slide, please. The project site is located on the landward side of Coast Highway at 31796 Coast Highway in the city of Laguna Beach in Orange County. The site is currently developed with a vacant dental office and paved parking lot on three lots totaling 17,441 square feet. A variety of commercial and residential uses surround the subject site with single-family residences, a vacant lot, and mixed commercial uses occupying adjacent lots. Next slide, please. The city-approved project includes the demolition of an existing vacant dental office and construction of a new fire station, including widening of existing driveways, public street and sidewalk improvements, retaining walls, parking lot improvements, landscaping, hardscape, installation of an emergency generator, construction of two public restrooms, and installation of one canopy sign. The appellant's contend the project does not qualify for a notice of local final, notice of final local action and should not have been submitted to the commission, and that elements of the project were deferred to condition compliance to be approved by the city manager and not of the city's planning commission. Commission staff reviewed the city's notice of final local action submitted on June 13th, 2025, and determined the submission was sufficient pursuant to sections 13332 and 13571 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations. Additionally, the city's LCP does not prohibit the city manager from reviewing and approving conditioned compliance materials, nor does the LCP require the planning commission to review conditioned compliance materials as recommended by the appellant's. The appellant's also assert that public participation to the city's process was deficient and does not meet the provisions of Coastal Act Sections 30006. The grounds for an appeal require an allegation that the development does not conform to the standards set forth in the Certified Local Coastal Program or the Public Access and Recreation Policies of the Coastal Act, which should not include Section 30006. In any case, according to the city's records, the city held three public outreach workshops and two public hearings regarding the city-approved project, which suggests the city appears to have provided sufficient public outreach and participation. Next slide, please. The appellant's contend the city-approved project does not conform with coastal development permit review criteria and lacks sufficient findings for impacts to neighborhood character, views, and compatibility with surrounding development and public access. The appellant's did not provide evidence to demonstrate that the proposed project would result in adverse impacts to coastal views, but state-building elevations and unbuffered views would negatively impact views from Coast Highway and adjacent properties. In order to minimize impacts to coastal views, the city-approved project is designed with a flat roof without mechanical equipment and cites the taller two-story portion of the structure at the northern end of the lot in order to maintain a coastal view corridor outlined in blue on this slide. Furthermore, the city-approved project includes conditions to reduce the height of the structure by one foot and shift the footprint of the structure five feet to the northern property line in order to further reduce view impacts. And a residential structure to the north of the site exists at a higher elevation than the proposed fire station, which is outlined in yellow on this slide. Next slide, please. In regard to neighborhood character, the appellant's similarly did not provide evidence to demonstrate that the proposed project is not compatible with surrounding development, but assert the design is not consistent with adjacent development. As can be seen on this slide, surrounding development includes a mix of residential structures, vacant lots, and a variety of commercial uses, including restaurants and storefronts, expressing variable architectural features. The city-approved project incorporates wood siding, masonry elements, vertical and horizontal metal siding, and a flat roof compatible with development in the area. Additionally, the project incorporates a preliminary landscaping plan and is conditioned to provide a final landscaping plan and color and materials board to further improve compatibility with nearby residential areas. Next slide, please. The appellant's assert that the city-approved project would adversely impact public access specifically due to the proposed widened driveway accessible via Coast Highway, which would impact traffic flow on Coast Highway, loss of parking on Coast Highway, and the conversion of a pedestrian sidewalk into driveways for emergency vehicles. Although the city-approved project would widen driveways to accommodate the new fire station, pedestrian access would be maintained along Coast Highway, indicated with the yellow dashed arrow on this slide. And the project would reconstruct ADA-compliant public sidewalks and provide two ADA-compliant public restrooms to accommodate pedestrians, highlighted in blue. Additionally, the city-approved project would provide 10 parking spaces via surface parking lot for personnel, and the development would not create any new parking demand. Policy 2B of the Transportation, Circulation, and Growth Management Element discourages driveway access to and from Coast Highway to minimize interruptions to traffic flow. The city-approved project would include driveway access to Coast Highway for emergency vehicles. According to city records, the subject site is anticipated to respond to an average of 2.6 calls per day, with emergency vehicles exiting via Coast Highway and entering via Fifth Avenue represented in white arrows on this slide. The appellant's assert that ingress and egress should be limited to Fifth Avenue for consistency with Policy 2B. However, Policy 2B does not prohibit driveway access to and from Coast Highway. Furthermore, Fifth Avenue is perpendicular to Coast Highway, and should emergency vehicles exit via Fifth Avenue, it is likely they would need to access Coast Highway via Fifth Avenue, so impacts to traffic flow would be equivalent. Finally, the appellant's contend that alternatives to the approved project exist that would minimize public access impacts and improve the project's compatibility with surrounding development. The appellant's specifically propose an alternative design with emergency vehicle access via Fifth Avenue and a proposed alternative landscaping design. However, the grounds for an appeal are subject to the city-approved project, and impacts to public access and compatibility with surrounding development were discussed in the previous slides. Next slide, please. In closing, staff concurs with the findings made by the city and believes that the city provided adequate legal support for its design decision to approve the subject project. Staff therefore recommends that the commission find no substantial issue with regard to the contentions on which the appeal has been filed. The motion to accomplish this can be found on page 4 of the staff report. Staff would note an addendum was posted to correct an error in the exhibits and to respond to correspondence received after publication of the staff report. The majority of comments received are substantially addressed in the staff report, and staff would additionally note that although the project would result in a loss of street parking on Coast Highway, the city-operated transit system provides remote parking at the nearby Mission Hospital site, trolley service along Coast Highway, and an on-demand micromobility program, which offset a small reduction to parking availability at the site. Therefore, staff continue to recommend that the commission find no substantial issue with regard to the contentions on which the appeal has been filed. This concludes the staff presentation, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Palm. Are there any commissioners who have any expertises to report? Commissioner Kelly.
Same prior email I mentioned from the city manager, just kind of discussing what's in the staff report about this project.
Great. Thank you. Okay, now we will open the public hearing and begin with the appellant's. We'll have three minutes, please.
Hello, I'm Ann Kristof. I'm a landscape architect, former council member and mayor. And I've been involved in planning in this community for over 50 years. Could you show my slides, please? Here's our volunteer, whoops. Here's our volunteer-generated fire station from 1951. We do need a new fire station, but it needs to be done right. Please find substantial issue to put this project back on track in accordance with the LCP. Next. This is the community that it's supposed to fit into. Here is the site as viewed from Fifth Avenue. Next. And you can see that a building could easily fit there against that hill and would not have to be built across the Coast Highway frontage, blocking views and causing this traffic impact. But that's not where they put it. That decision was made completely at the staff level before any community involvement was done. Next. This is Coast Highway, and Fifth Avenue is in the distance there. Engines need to enter at a controlled intersection, not from driveways in between. There are LCP policies that are being ignored. Next. Driveways are being discouraged, are discouraged, but that's where they put the fire station driveways. They can easily enter and exit at Fifth Avenue, and a signal can be added there. Next. The architecture is next. The architecture is not compatible. It doesn't comply with the LCP. I think this is the wrong slide. There's something over the top of my slide there on the right, upper right. There you go. So these are, these are the buildings in, in this area that don't relate it, I mean, this new building relates not at all to those. Next. Public parking on Coast Highway is important, and there are, excuse me.
One more minute, ma'am.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I didn't know other people were going to be allowed to speak, or I would have more speakers, unless on the previous item. So public parking is important along here, and parking at the hospital is not going to serve the same need at all. We spent 20 years getting these streetscape improvements with, working with the city and Caltrans, and those are going to be destroyed when they do this demolition and, and affect the, the public pedestrians going along this highway. Next. So the process has been defective. There were four conditions required by the planning commission, two of which were said to come back to the planning commission. The council held a hearing on June 11th where they removed that condition for the sole purpose of preventing another appeal to the coastal commission. Next. We feel that this is taking away the right of the public to participate when you turn the decision on these important conditions over to the city manager without the normal public review process. And this is one of the main reasons we don't think the notice of final action should have been accepted. We urge you to reject that, and we urge you to either, and ask the city to return and do a submittal that complies with the LCP. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then we have the applicant on Zoom, which is Alex Farnagi. Alex, if you can mute.
Hi, everyone. Really, really, I think we have a slideshow as well, but really great to be with you all. I'm sorry I'm not in Calabasas. I just have a day job, but Calabasas is very far from where I am. So I appreciate being with, with all of you, and I just want to start by praising what I think is a great example of staff's collaboration from the city side with coastal staff with respect to the promenade of this item. And we also, this week, we, we had our first project under the ordinance that was approved by the coastal commission related to second story housing along our, our commercial corridor, which I think is a great example of how you can achieve coastal resources while still addressing the housing need. So just appreciate the collaboration. And so, you know, as the mayor of Laguna Beach, I'm rising to support the staff's recommendation to find no substantial issue regarding fire station number four. This project has gone through significant public review, including a full appeal hearing at the city council in June from the, the planning commission. It's a solid design and one that has been improved with public input. Critically, it adds new public restrooms for beachgoers where restrooms are scarce now. I wanted to talk about a couple of the issues in the appeal, so let's go to the next slide, please. So the first is, and next slide, please, parking, where, actually go back to the other side, sorry about that. And I really like all the comments that I heard from Commissioner Jackson and others with respect to parking, but really, I don't think this is an issue here. This project displaces three unmarked spots, two on Coast Highway, one on Fifth Avenue. The appellant's preferred design with access off Fifth Avenue would actually displace more parking spaces because of the turnaround radius. And, you know, as was previously referenced, this project is also about 450 feet from over 100 free parking spaces the city rents from the hospital, and those are underutilized. We're working on how we can get more beachgoers to, you know, be aware of them. And next slide, please. There was a lot of discussion previously about the trolley issue in our on-demand service, which is like free Uber essentially, which I think is, is a great way to enhance public access, both for, you know, visitors, but also residents not to, you know, rely on a car as you're going around town. And I want to praise Tony Eiseman, who I think is in the audience there, who is, who really was the one who kickstarted the whole trolley idea, and other communities have embraced it as well. So again, I don't think parking is really the issue here. Next slide. So the second issue is about design and public input, and on this slide you see a project example submitted by Morris Skenderian, who's a very respected local architect. Next slide. And on this slide, you can see some of the evolution of the station, and here's a sketch by Morris as the design developed. And on the slide I'm about to show you, you see the end product as done by an architect that designs fire stations to current standards. Next slide, please. As you can see, it's still rustic and the result of multiple public meetings and neighborhood working group sessions. I count nine over, in just in the last four months. So, you know, the public's been very involved. So commissioners, at the end of the day, let, uh, next slide, please. I think this comes down to public safety. The question Laguna Beach is not if, but when the next wildfire happens. That's how we approach it, and it's critical that we have a fire station that's seismically sound. So I appreciate all the work on this and support staff's recommendation. So thank you very much, and great to be with all of you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to qualified speakers at two minutes each, please.
Okay, so we have Merrill Anderson, Greg Olafland. Oh, they didn't sign up. Never mind, no speakers.
Okay. Wonderful. I'll close the public hearing and return to staff if they have any comments or responses.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just two really brief comments that I wanted to make. First being in regard to the special conditions that the appellant's asserting were deferring elements of the project and not allowing for public review. We see those as minor elements of the project. Those are including a final approval of a landscaping plan, color board, and materials board. The project was approved with all of the above. However, the conditions require final approval of those to allow for additional public input as well as engagement from the planning commission and final approval from the city manager. And the other brief note I wanted to make, you did hear this from the city representative as well. The city did analyze alternatives, including access via Fifth Avenue, and determined that that would actually remove more parking spaces than the preferred and city-approved proposal before you today. In that case, additionally, I just wanted to note, the city is available online for questions regarding the specifics of the design. It is also noted that they found should access be limited to Fifth Avenue, that would actually impede fire response. And so I'll defer to, of course, the city representatives to elaborate on that. The city engineer is available online to discuss that further. And Mr. Shwing, if you have any further comments, I'll defer to you. Otherwise, back to you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'll turn to my fellow commissioners for questions, comments, or motion. Commissioner Kelly.
I was just really impressed with the design, and as, in a city where we just were recently able to build a new fire station, I, I know the level of process that you have to go to, to get, get to this point, and that wasn't even in the coastal zone. So I can only imagine, you know, kind of the additional layers here of how it's arrived at this, at this point. I think some of the public amenities and the restroom component, and just thinking through, you know, it's, it's a funny juxtaposition with the conversation we were having yesterday with some of the neighboring communities about their lack of fire resources and lack of investment in being able to have, you know, a fire station that services the community and their fear around, you know, fire preparedness. And so here is, you know, the, another community nearby who's been proactive in trying to build that new station. And so I just want to acknowledge, you know, the, the importance of, of having these resources in the community and modernizing them, and then also being able to have the public amenities like the restrooms and otherwise. I think that's, that's a great, you know, benefit. Thanks.
Commissioner Pressiato.
I just wanted to comment, I have a fire station that's less than a hop and a skip from my home, and I don't, well, I appreciate that it's close by. It helps with insurance. But the only thing that I, that I was thinking about is one of the measures that we have for that fire station is that their, their lights and all the other measures that they need to undertake to be able to operate are done, but after 9:00 PM, there's no noise. So they do take off, and they serve the community, and, but they try to get closer to the incident before they turn on their noise. And, you know, it's for the public safety and everyone else, but I'm just wondering if there are any measures, given that it's, the Pacific Coast Highway is a quite impacted road, so everyone needs to take every measure you need to be safe. But I'm just wondering about noise abatement, but other than that, I saw no, no issue that was challenging with this station. I hope my commissioners, or I join Commissioner Kelly in thinking this is an excellent project.
Would you like a response, Commissioner Pressiato? Okay.
Hi, Dave Kiff again, the city manager in Laguna Beach. I don't know if you can see if Chief King, Nico King, is on the call. He's our expert on noise and exiting.
Yes, we have Nico King on Zoom.
Could you bring Mr. King, Chief King, up?
Are bringing him in as a panelist.
Thank you.
Nico King, when you're able to, please accept being moved in.
And Chief King, I don't know if you heard, the question was about when you exit the station, especially later in the hours, what's the approach with sirens and lights?
All right, they're almost there.
Yeah, good morning, Chief King. Hope you can all hear me. Yeah, I did hear the question. There was great consideration about the noise, the fire station. We had discussions about, you know, the typical noise that you might hear, but there's, there's the way that the station is positioned with the parking in the back, the retaining walls would help lessen some of the noise, but we do take into consideration our response and travel. It's part of the reason why we like to exit out on the Coast Highway, which goes against the direction of the neighborhood. And of course, we always take into consideration the level of traffic. We use our lights and then sirens intermittently, depending on the level of traffic, to have traffic yield to the emergency equipment. But if there's, if there's light traffic and we're traveling through residential area and/or light traffic and we're leaving the station at night, we of course will be very disparate in how we're going to use our sirens, trying to accommodate the neighborhoods that we're serving.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, are there any other comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
I guess I'll do it again. I move that the commission determine that appeal number A-5-LGB-25-0019 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the Coastal Act, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Lopez. Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, no substantial issue has been found. So I'm going to suggest we take a very brief break, but we do have quite a lot of commenters, so please be back at 11:15. Okay. Thank you so much. We will return and move to item 12E, I believe.
Thank you, Chair Harmon. Yes, we are on item 12E. This is the Pacific Airshow application, and Seth Villanueva and Spencer Sayer with our Long Beach office are going to do the initial presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item 12E is a CDP application by Pacific Airshow LLC for a privately ticketed three-day airshow event, including aircraft demonstrations, spectator viewing areas, temporary infrastructure, concessions, restrooms, and other entertainment displays. The applicant is seeking a five-year authorization to hold this annual airshow between late September and early October between 2025 and 2029. This year's event is scheduled to occur from Friday, October 3rd through Sunday, October 5th. Next slide, please. The proposed airshow event would take place along the public beach between Seventh Street and Beach Boulevard in Huntington Beach, approximately one mile in length, as well as a similarly sized area of the adjacent coastal waters, the Huntington Beach Pier, and public parking lots along Pacific Coast Highway. The proposed project is located partially within the city of Huntington Beach, Beach's LCP jurisdiction and partially within the retained jurisdiction of the coastal commission. The city of Huntington Beach agreed to consolidate permit action for aspects of the proposed work that would be carried out in the city of Huntington Beach's CDP jurisdiction, consistent with Coastal Act Section 30601.3. As such, the standard of review for such consolidated permits is consistency with the Chapter III policies of the Coastal Act, with certified LCP policies serving as guidance. Next slide. The applicant has held the Pacific Airshow annually in the city of Huntington Beach since 2016, with the exception of 2020, for three days over a weekend in September or October. Past airshows have featured aircraft flybys and aerial acrobatics from civilian and military aircraft. The primary area used by the event for the on-the-ground activities is the show center area. The show center area consists of the beach portion of the Huntington Beach Pier, parking lots, and bicycle and walking trails along Pacific Coast Highway. The Huntington Beach Pier could, would be used for additional paid seating and would be temporarily closed during the flying events due to safety requirements related to the airshow performance aerobatic box. Approximately 500 park, public parking spaces would be used by the applicant for private event parking, including both daytime parking and overnight RV parking, as well as for staging of the developments on the beach. The show center area is closed as a paid ticketing area for the event, and includes a number of event activities and offerings, including reserved seatings and hospitality spaces, catering tents, food trucks, merchandise booths, bars serving beer, wine, and spirits, public safety stations, security checkpoints, volunteer tents, portable restrooms, and trash facilities. Each of the three event days would run from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Aircraft flights will operate between 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM of each event day, though additional aircraft flights will occur starting Monday before the event weekend as practice days for airshow performer pilots. Monday, September 29th for the 2025 event. Installation of temporary infrastructure of 2025 is planned to begin Tuesday, September 23rd, and removal of all installations would conclude by Thursday, October 9th, 2025. As will be explained shortly, the Pacific Airshow has been subject to previous enforcement action for operating previous airshows without the benefit of CDP. I will now turn the presentation to Spencer Sayer, environmental analyst with the commission's enforcement division, to detail the enforcement background for this event.
Thank you, Seth. Next slide, please. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The CDP application is brought before you today as part of an agreement reached in a consent executive director's cease and desist order negotiated last year between today's applicant and commission enforcement staff, which was presented to the commission in September 2024. As I'll explain later, the funds for resolution of this violation will go towards the Bol Sichika Ecological Reserve, which is shown in this photo. You may recall, the applicant has organized the airshow in some form in Huntington Beach since 2016, but the annual event did not receive a CDP under the Coastal Act from the city of Huntington Beach or the commission. After several productive meetings with commission staff throughout 2024, the applicant demonstrated a willingness to resolve this matter for the 2024 airshow consensually by agreeing to the terms and conditions of the consent EDCDO. One of the provisions of the EDCDO was that the applicant agreed to seek Coastal Act authorization and submit a complete CDP application to the commission for any future Pacific Airshow events, hence the application before you today. the Commission for any future Pacific Airshow events, hence the application before you today. As part of the EDCDO, the airshow is required to provide two vertical public accessways and one horizontal public accessway throughout the event to the shoreline. Commission staff also attended the event in person to confirm the public was able to access these routes without incident. In addition, the CDP application before you today also resolves the potential ongoing Coastal Act liability for previous unpermitted airshows. Resolution of this violation would occur upon approval as recommended by staff and full execution of the permit, including payment in conjunction with implementation of the permit, which will be further described in a minute. Next slide, please. To address that remaining liability amicably and avoid the need for a separate enforcement action, the applicant, as part of their CDP application, and to resolve the outstanding enforcement issues arising from previously unpermitted airshows, is proposing a payment of $274,758 to be made to the California State Lands Commission to fund much-needed public access and habitat enhancement projects at the nearby Bolsochica Ecological Reserve in Huntington Beach to address the impacts of previous events on public access and coastal natural resources. This photo here shows some of the approximately three miles of scenic public access trails throughout the reserve. For those of you who are unaware, the reserve consists of 1,300 acres of pristine coastal habitat surrounding a saltwater estuary near the airshow event. Commission Enforcement Staff is grateful for the applicant's cooperation throughout this permitting process, and we look forward to working with them in the future. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time, and back to you, Seth.
Thank you, Spencer. Next slide, please. The primary Coastal Act issue raised by this project is the impact that the proposed airshow would have on public access to Huntington City Beach. The proposed event boundary would result in two significant coastal access impacts. First, the event would temporarily privatize approximately one mile of sandy beach that the public would otherwise have free recreational access to for a three-day period. To mitigate for these public access impacts, the applicant has proposed to distribute approximately 1,500 free tickets per event day, with priority consideration given to students from Title I schools in the community and their guardians. Any remaining tickets would be distributed to the general public. The access proposal serves to reduce barriers to public access to low-end communities. But taken alone, it is not the equivalent of direct vertical coastal access and lateral access along the shoreline. Thus, Special Condition 2 requires the applicant applicant to prepare a shoreline access plan that allows for horizontal shoreline access and at least two vertical accessways through the venue. The applicant has insisted that the temporary restriction of coastal access during the event is necessary for public safety and for security needs pursuant to Section 30212A of the Coastal Act. As evidence to their argument that the applicant provided a third-party public safety study outlining different types of public safety incidents that have occurred during previous airshows and other similar events, including in its recommendation that there should be no unmitigated access to the beach during the proposed airshow. In response to this concern, staff would note that the applicant would be allowed to manage security along entry points using metal detectors, bag checks, or similar security features, meaning that access to the beach is not unmitigated and in line with the safety study recommendation. The plan would also allow for the applicant to respond to emergencies during the event as necessary and also coordinate with the executive director to restrict access as part of emergency response measures as necessary if a credible security threat is established prior to the event. This is similar to the access plan requirements required under the 2024 EDCDO described earlier in this presentation. Next slide, please. Second, the project would close off the Huntington Beach Pier and coastal waters surrounding the pier during the event days. The applicant has stated that Federal Aviation Administration regulations required restricted access within airshows, within the airshow's aerobatic box, which for the Pacific Airshow includes the portion of the Huntington Beach Pier seaward of the mean high tide line and the surrounding coastal waters. The portion of the pier over coastal waters is managed by the State Lands Commission, and the applicant has indicated they are seeking authorization for the usage and closure of this area for the event. In addition, the applicant has proposed a ticketed pier viewing area that would run from the base of the pier near the Huntington Beach Bike Trail to the mean high tide line on the southeastern face of the pier, with a 15-foot emergency buffer between the seating area and northwestern pier edge. This closure constitutes a significant restriction of public access and recreational opportunities offered by the pier, including unhindered access to scenic views, recreational fishing, and dining opportunities. To address these access impacts, Special Condition 10 requires that at least 100 of the daily 1,500 free airshow tickets be designated specifically for the reserved pier seating. Further, to ensure that the access restrictions caused by the aerobatic box are minimized, Special Condition 11 and Special Condition 12 require the applicant to restore access to the pier and coastal waters in the hours when aircraft are not operating in the area for the event. Next slide, please. The proposed project also raises Coastal Act issues pertaining to protection of biological resources. While the ground activity associated with the airshow is sighted along the public beach and pier of Huntington Beach, the aircraft serving as a pivotal component of the event will be present and active in the Temporary Flight Restriction, or TFR, area extending five nautical miles around Huntington Beach, which notably includes a number of natural reserves, nature reserves, such as Bolsochica Ecological Reserve, or BECR, and Seal Beach National Wildlife Refuge. Although BECR is not directly incorporated as part of the project site, it is located within the flight path between the Los Alamitos Joint Base Station and the aerobatic box where a majority of the in-air activities would take place. If the aircraft fly at too low of an altitude, they will interfere with bird species, including through flushing actions. The applicant has stated that they will request that aircraft avoid overflights of the BECR to the maximum extent feasible, and would limit overflight to 1,000 feet elevation when unavoidable. In previous airshows, the applicant has provided all participating pilots with pre-flight safety briefing materials reflecting these requests during a mandatory pre-show briefing meeting. To memorialize the applicant's avoidance measures, Special Condition 17 requires the applicant to conduct safety briefings for pilots with these explicit requests. The applicant has also proposed biological monitors at BECR. Before each airshow, wildlife monitoring will begin in the BECR and will be carried out across each day of airshow-associated aircraft flying activity. Monitoring is expected to identify the incidence and severity of noise impacts caused by the airshow flying activities. After a post-event survey, a report shall be submitted to Executive Director following each airshow that documents disturbances caused to reserve wildlife, as well as potential provisions for future mitigation measures to address any observed significant impacts to birds. Special Condition 16 requires the applicant to submit for the review and approval of the Executive Director a final biological monitoring plan before the airshow. Next slide, please. The airshow performance area, or the aerobatic box, is the primary area for civilian and military aircraft flybys and aerial acrobatics. It is located adjacent to the show center area over the Pacific Ocean with an east-west length of approximately 3,000 feet from the shoreline and a north-south length of approximately 12,000 feet. A majority of the civilian and military aircraft flybys and aerial acrobatics occurs within approximately 500 and 1,500 feet from the shoreline per FAA regulation. However, many of the aircraft maneuvers, particularly for the military, spill out of the aerobatic box into the TFR airspace controlled by the airshow. The airshow's aerobatic box is identified by large inflatable marker buoys anchored in the ocean. The project proposal identifies that there is the possibility of a quote, "low-probability, potentially-high-impact event of an emergency fuel dump," end quote, from an aircraft participating in the airshow that results from emergency safety maneuvering. The application states that if dumped at significant altitude, upwards of 90% of the expelled aviation fuel dumped with typically will typically evaporate before hitting the surface. With the airshow's aerobatic box situated offshore over coastal waters, there is a significant risk that any fuel dumps that could result from the airshow may lead to some amount of aviation fuel entering coastal water. To protect water quality and marine's resources from the possibility of such significant, albeit rare, petroleum spill event, and ensure that the applicant is prepared to respond to such an emergency through coordination with relevant emergency response agencies, Special Condition 7 requires a fuel dump cleanup plan. The applicant has expressed its intent to continue to produce the Pacific Airshow in the future and in the same location. There are a number of other potential new activities that the applicant has alluded to offering in future airshow events between 2026 and 2029. Because these activities are conceptual in their current state of project plans and subject to change based on their implementation in future events, their potential coastal resource impacts will correspondingly depend on the specific plans that would be prepared in advance of their inclusion in future airshows. Special Condition 1 imposed by the Commission requires that the applicant seek an amendment to this coastal development permit before new potential activities are allowed as part of the proposed development, to allow for the complete analysis of coastal resource impacts based on revised project plans. Staff would note that a lack of specific development details provided in the event plans and the absence of previous biological monitoring data makes it difficult to completely evaluate the event's public access and biological resource impacts, and further, whether the proposed and conditioned mitigation measures are sufficient to alleviate these impacts. With this in mind, staff originally recommended a one-year authorization for the event, but have revised their recommendation in the addendum for this item to a five-year authorization recommendation following changes to the special conditions of the permit, which I'll explain further next. Next slide, please. After publication of the staff report, Commission staff received correspondence from members of the public, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Bolsochica Land Trust, and State Lands Commission. These letters outlined a number of concerns within the airshow, including biological impact concerns, noise and traffic concerns, and concerns over the airshow's prior history of operating without a CDP. Staff has prepared an addendum to address these concerns, and the addendum has been published to the Commission's website. In response to these concerns, Commission staff clarified that the monitoring must occur in Bolsochica and that monitoring at Seal Beach National Wildlife Refuge is subject to coordination with federal agencies to obtain access. Staff also received a response from the applicant, which primarily requested several revisions to the special conditions. Of note, the applicant requested that the Commission reconsider a five-year authorization instead of the one-year authorization recommended under Special Condition 1. To address concerns related to public access impacts and biological resource impacts, the applicant has proposed an adaptive management strategy, which would require that the applicant team submit annual public access and biological monitoring reports after each airshow for the review by the Commission's Executive Director. If the report identifies no significant impacts, the airshow could proceed with the next year's event under the authorization. If significant impacts are identified, however, the applicant would be required to come back before the Commission under an amendment or new CDP to authorize the next airshow. Commission staff determined that this approach would address some of the outstanding concerns and have therefore proposed revisions to Special Condition 1 to 14 and 16 to incorporate the adaptive management proposal and reestablish the five-year authorization period. To conclude, Commission staff recommends approval of the coastal development permit application with conditions as detailed in the staff report and associated addendum. The motion and resolutions are on page five of the staff report. This concludes staff presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
It looks like we may have lost our chair.
Yeah, Madam Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, maybe you could take over chairing the hearing if given our chair is out.
Excuse me. All right. Sorry about that. All right. So are we beginning public comment? Where are we in this? Are you?
Expartes.
Okay. Are there any expartes on this matter? All right, seeing none. So let's move forward and ask if the applicant is available.
Yes, we have the applicant, as well as a bunch of representatives for them on Zoom. Kevin Elliott, and we have your presentation. How much time will you need?
Is there just one person for the applicant, Chris?
One presenter, yes.
Okay. So we're asking how much time you might need?
I'd like 10 minutes plus five minutes for rebuttal, please.
This is the applicant. All right. So that sounds fine. So 10 minutes with five reserved for rebuttal.
Great. Good morning, Chair and members of the Commission. Thank you, guys, very much for your time today. I'm excited to share some brief details with you about the wonderful Pacific Airshow in Huntington Beach. Before we begin, I want to thank everybody who's taken time out of their busy day to join us here to make some comments and show their support. I also want to thank the Commission staff for their support through this process. We appreciate all of the help and guidance that they've given us in navigating the CDP process and bringing our project into compliance. The staff's been wonderful, and I really look forward to continuing the great relationship that we've built as we go forward. And I know I need to be brief, but I also am proud to say that in this process, the Commission staff have not only been helpful, but I think they've become airshow fans, and perhaps none more than Lisa Hagie. So if she's there, we'll give her a thumbs up. So next slide, please. So today, just want to cover a few brief points about the airshow. I'll just introduce myself. I'll present to you the community benefits. We'll discuss how we balance the economics with the airshow and the environmental safeguards that we're putting in place. Next slide, please. So quickly about me, I am born and raised in Huntington Beach. I started a company here in 2007 that produces events. I became aware of the airshow in 2016, offered my assistance and took it on as a local member of the community to maintain it, grow it, and save it for our community. I actually live in the Bolsochica Ecological Reserve, and so I'm a native to this area, and this is very important to me. I serve on several boards and commissions. I happen to be a member of the Bolsochica Conservancy Board. I'm on the board of the Orange County Boy Scouts of America. I serve as an executive member of the International Council of Airshows, which is the global governing body of airshows, at least for North America. I'm on the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment Council. I am part of the American Chamber of Commerce and Queensland Council of Governors, and I also serve as an airport commissioner for Orange County Airport. Next slide, please. So we're very proud of Pacific Airshow. As I mentioned, being a community member, I've taken it under my wing and have tried to build it for the benefit of the community and all of Southern California. The majority of the event is free. We are offering 1,500 free tickets per day and priority for Title I schools, and even more for other school students, as you'll see in my next slide. Our pier access has always been free for disabled persons and their caregivers. Huntington Beach is a great venue because obviously it's very accessible, but we put a very strong emphasis on maximizing ADA access across all event areas, meaning we actually put materials down on the beach to make all of our ticket areas accessible. One of the things I love the most about this event is it appeals to a very diverse audience. It's a very non-endemic audience. You have to be an aviation fanatic to go to an airshow and stand on a hot runway, but you don't necessarily have to know anything about aviation to want to come down to the beach and enjoy a day with your whole family. And it is truly an event that appeals to the whole family. So people will often ask who our target customer is, and I'll say it's everybody, because it's the young and the old experiencing the magic of aviation. And to that end, it encourages people to get outside and promotes an active outdoor lifestyle. It is during a shoulder season, so typically October is a very slow time for the beach because everybody's gone back to school, and we've taken a slow time and we've turned it into the busiest beach day of the year throughout California. And there's a very strong emphasis on sustainable transportation through all of the various methods that people use to access the beach through bicycling and pulling wagons and you name it. People find their way to the beach en masse, and it's quite an experience. Next slide, please. For every paid ticket, we was presented that we have the show center paid area, and we do have to obviously have a way to make this work from a financial sustainability. So we create a show center area and try to create a value proposition of purchasing a ticket. But what I love about Pacific Airshow and what's unique to this, probably from any other event, is that for every ticket that we sell, we have 20 people that watch the event for free, as evidenced by the photo that you can see there in the background. We'll talk a little bit more about this. Next slide, please. So these, this is our 2021 overhead site plan. You can see they're highlighted in pink. That is essentially our paid ticketed area that we have on the beach. And everybody else that you see, whether it's in the parking lot, in the shopping centers, in the hotels, in the or on the beach, are attending this event and enjoying that event absolutely free of charge. So as I mentioned, for every one person inside the pink box, you have 20 people outside enjoying the event for free. And truly, the airshow is the community benefit. Next slide, please. This is another look. This is 2018. I just thought it would be nice to have two different perspectives so you could, again, see what that free access looks like outside of the ticketed area. Next slide, please. This year, we're excited to bring our students with Altitude Day. It's a little play on words there with the word attitude. And Friday, October 3, we have made an offer for all schools to attend for free, to do meet and greets with our pilots, participate in our new STEM exhibitions, and really just experience the magic of flight and, you know, consider potential experience the magic of flight and consider potentially careers in aerospace or any of the supporting fields. And then we're also offering a free return ticket to students on Saturday and Sunday with a paid adult. This is working in conjunction with the 1,500 free tickets per day. So on Friday, we'll have far greater than 1,500 free tickets out, obviously with the student promotion going. So we're very excited. And by the way, we've been doing these types of things all along, and you'll hear from some of our speakers hopefully that can reinforce that. I believe in sort of doing the right thing all the time, but we do need to obviously highlight some of these community benefits for the Commission's benefit today. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the event is very unique in that it appeals to all ages, all backgrounds in one amazing location. I love the fact that half of the people that attend don't know a difference between an F-18 and an F-35, but they know it was the best day they've ever had, and they're coming back tomorrow. And it's really a cool thing. Next slide. And of course, tickets make it possible, right? This is a local event produced by local people. I want to make a very big distinction that this is not some big corporate takeover of the beach. This is a local event produced by local people, and what makes it possible is paid attendance. It's a very expensive event to produce, as you might imagine. We have to pay for hundreds of hotel rooms, fuel, you know, all of the infrastructure, rental cars. And some of our speakers will speak to that as well. Given the nature of the beach, meaning it's not at an airshow where you can charge and there's a fence that controls the venue, we have to create that show center area and create a value proposition of supporting the airshow by purchasing a ticket, which, by the way, we try to keep very accessible and affordable as well. To date, the airshow has not made a profit, but we're looking forward to, with the Commission's support, being able to set this event on a stable ground so that we can go and secure sponsors and build this event over the next few years for the benefit of the community. And having that stability is something that's very important to us for obvious reasons. And it's worth noting that this is an extremely big driver of economic benefit to Orange County. It generates over $120 million in economic impact for the local businesses and residents. To put that into perspective, the World Series of Baseball generates about $100 million for its host city, and this is a benefit that the city of Huntington Beach and Greater Orange County gets to host every single year. So if you ask any of the local businesses, they'll tell you it's their busiest weekend of the year. Next slide, please. Environmental safeguards, we've always taken this very seriously. As I mentioned, this photo is essentially taken from my backyard, but we have done in the past and will continue to do biological and noise monitoring prior to, during rehearsal, during the event, and after the event. We'll be doing pre-flight biological sensitivity training with our pilots, avoiding the areas to overfly. We will, of course, implement construction best management practices with respect to our setup and breakdown, which includes proper spill containment and water quality protections. We have a waste management and pollution prevention plan that we produce every year in conjunction with the city, which we'll continue to do, as well as prohibition of single-use plastics. And as I mentioned, we have a reputational investment in this area, so this is a very important thing to us. Not only do I serve on the board that represents these environmental areas, but I live there as well. Next slide, please. This is just a brief overview of some of the environmental safeguard materials. I provided two visuals on the right, which are provided in our pilot briefings that show the views of the areas to avoid, specifically the BCE are shown in red. And again, if they must overfly, please do so at 1,000 feet or above, and if possible, 2,000 feet or above. And if at all, please avoid that area. We actually do provide waypoints in and out of there to specifically provide flight paths that avoid it. So it's not just visual avoidance, there is also GPS avoidance as well. Next slide, please. And these are just some of the sentiments. The show has been described to me as being life-changing. I have many family and friends and people who travel from around the world to attend the show. But when the people talk about it being on their bucket list and the fact that they absolutely love the fact that it combines the magic of aviation with the thrill of the coastal resource, it really is an experience you have to... Something you have to experience to fully understand. And with that, I yield back. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Chris, I believe that takes us to the elected officials.
Yes. We'll begin with Senator Tony Strickland. And then we'll move on to Senator Barb Archuleta, Diane Dixon, Pat Burns, Shelley Hasselbrink, Glenn Grandis, and Lisa Lando.
Two minutes each.
Okay, we're having trouble pronouncing you as a panelist. Tony Strickland, you should be able to unmute as an attendee now.
Yeah, we just followed him again.
There you go. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is State Senator Tony Strickland, and I just wanted to weigh in. We're a big supporter of the airshow here. I represent the airshow in the State Senate, former mayor of Huntington Beach. This is an event, this is a pivotal event for the city of Huntington Beach, and economic surveys show that it brings in about $100 million to our local regional economy. And on top of that, this show is actually in the fall. We're a destination city, and our beaches are full during the summertime. But this is one of the biggest events for us because it's actually done in a non-busy time in Huntington Beach. Our hotels are full, our restaurants are full, and it's a central part of our economy here in our city. On top of that, because of the airshow and the success of the airshow, it being a main stay here in Huntington Beach thus far, we have got other cities, other events, because they saw how well this event has done in terms of the kind of crowds and the population and how family-friendly this event is. And so we've actually got inquiries from other big events and reached out to Huntington Beach because of the success of what we do with the Pacific Airshow. So I'm here today just to say encourage the support for the airshow. It's a signature event here, and it's an event that our businesses rely on, and it's an incredible organization. It's also a very prideful event. People have a lot of pride coming to the airshow, and it's a family-friendly event. And I encourage you to support the airshow moving forward in perpetuity, hopefully, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next is Senator Barb Archuleta.
Yes. Good morning. Oop, hang on, we're just having a little bit of difficulty. There we go. Good morning, everyone. I'm Bob Archuleta, and I'm testifying before you as a private citizen, but a veteran. I served with the 82nd Airborne back in my day, and there was a time when I was the Commissioner of Military Veterans Affairs, the county of Los Angeles, which that was some time ago. But I'm before you as a private citizen who have been at the airshow over the years, and I just wanted to share with all of you what an asset the airshow is to not only Huntington Beach, but Southern California as a whole. And I know that with the leadership that Kevin has given us in the past and will do in the future, this airshow, God willing, you grant it and approve it, will join the airshows across the nation. But this is the largest airshow in the country, and the recruiting ability that it gives to our men and women who are thinking about joining the military. The Department of Defense has identified this as a top priority for recruiting. And I also would like to share that the men and women who serve our great country, their families, their wives, their husbands, grandmothers, all the entire families are there to see the airshow. And it really is a family event when it comes to our veterans and those who are serving. And it's amazing how family-friendly the event is overall, with millions of people have been there since 2016. And as I'm sure you all know, the state of California is always looking to improve our economic status as the fourth-largest economy in the world. Well, this airshow sure helps to that, and it does promote Southern California, if not the entire show and the entire state. So it is free usually to everyone, the costs are low, and I think Huntington Beach is a better community because of it. Each and every year, the economy there locally goes through the roof, so I can't say enough about it, and I totally 100% support it, and hopefully you'll do the same.
Thank you, Senator. Next is State Assembly Member Diane Dixon.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. Well, thank you. I'm joining the chorus of area supporters and as a member of the California Assembly for the District 72, which includes Huntington Beach and Seal Beach and Newport Beach and Laguna Beach and cities inland. I am an enthusiastic supporter, not only as an assembly member, but I served as a council member in neighboring Newport Beach for eight years and mayor twice. And when the initial beginning of those early years of the airshow, we did hear some citizen involvement saying, oh, my goodness, it's going to be too loud and it's going to be difficult. Well, after the first airshow in 2016, we never heard another word. People love it from Newport Beach, every beach and boat, anybody can get out. What Kevin did not show you is the population, enormous population of boating vessels, little boats, big boats, out in the water, watching in front of the beach there where the airshow is stationed, enjoying it. So all-encompassing, Southern California loves this airshow, and you've heard the benefits to the community, at the people on the beach. You could be anywhere in that five-mile vicinity, tilt your head up to the sky, and you can enjoy for free the airshow. And I've been there on the sand, I've stood on the streets and enjoyed it, actually from my home in Newport Beach, and you could see the planes fly. And my neighbors are out on the street watching. It is an amazing demonstration of our country's air power, frankly, and the history of our air power when some of the older planes fly. So it's just an amazing, prideful experience for all of us, young and old, and just listening to Kevin's presentation on the environmental benefits that he's doing, the Bolsochica. It is really giving back to the community as it should, and I'm very proud to endorse it for that reason. So Mr. Elliott is committed to our community, and Huntington Beach is a great city, and I fully endorse the staff recommendation and hope to see this goes on in perpetuity. Thank you so much. I'm proud to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mayor of the City of Huntington Beach, Pat Burns. Pat, you should be able to unmute. We've been having trouble pronouncing you as a panelist. Pat Burns. I'm not seeing them unmuted, so we're going to come back. Let's move to Los Alamos City Council Member Shelley Hasselbrink.
Good morning. I'm Shelley Hasselbrink. I'm the proud mayor of the City of Los Alamos and home to the Joint Forces Training Base. I also serve on the Orange County Airport Land Use Commission. My comments today are only going to address the impact of the city of Los Alamos and don't include any details of the operations or finance of the airshow. While the airshow is staged along the beautiful Huntington Beach coastline, I want to share how its impact reaches far beyond the sand, right into the heart of our community. The Joint Forces Training Base is honored to serve as the home base for the airshow's military aircraft and pilots. For several days each year, our skies are alive with the sound of freedom as these incredible aircraft take off and land. What our residents experience is nothing short of a mini-airshow, a unique and up-close view of these high-performance aircraft in action without ever leaving the city. Equally special is the personnel connection forged when pilots and crews host free meet and greet events at JFTB. Families, veterans, and young people aspiring to serve or fly have the rare opportunity to speak with these men and women, hear their stories, and be inspired by their service. These moments plant seeds of patriotism, career interest, and community pride. In short, the Pacific Airshow strengthens our community bonds, supports our local economy, and deepens the connection between the public and those who serve. We are proud to be a partner in making it happen and hope to see its legacy continue for years to come. And as a resident and a lover of the beach, there is nothing cooler than standing with your toes in the sand with the backdrop of the Pacific Ocean, watching these amazing aircraft fly above. It's an experience that very few people get to encounter, and we are blessed that it's right in our own backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. And then now I'm seeing Pat Burns on the iPhone. You should be able to unmute now.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you.
All right, sorry, just got into an elevator. All right, obviously, I fully support this, and it does so much good for the community. Besides the economic value and everything, the patriotism it brings to the whole area, all the cities surrounding, our city and all our guests, I've heard very few negative statements about the airshow. It is one of the best things in this whole Southern California area. The airshow operates, and Kevin and the Pacific Airshow Group, they run such a professional, incredible, courteous, well-organized event. They try to accommodate wherever they can, and it is just a real credit to his organization, Huntington Beach, and really the state of California. People come from all over the world to come and see this airshow. I've witnessed it, I've met the people, I've talked to them. People are in awe over what we experience every year at this event, and there is really nothing negative about it that I can say, especially that would outweigh us doing it year after year. It... I can't go on. I can go on and on, but I support this, and it is the best thing this area has. And I please ask you guys to help us out, make this happen as soon as possible and as efficiently as possible. That's...thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Fountain Valley City Council Member Glenn Grandis.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
Excellent. So I am the current council member of the City of Fountain Valley. I was mayor for the city last year. I attend the airshow every year and support moving forward. I want to make sure that everyone's talking about...I read all the letters and everything online, and a lot of it talks about the Bolsochica Conservancy. I like the fact that they're going to be donating $275,000 towards that. But I want to talk a little bit about Kevin himself. So Kevin, I know he said he was born and raised in Huntington Beach. He was actually raised in Fountain Valley, went to Fountain Valley High School, and I've known him since he's 12 years old, a real good person in our community. I have a son with special needs, non-verbal autistic, and when Kevin was a teenager, I used to babysit him. I trusted him with family members. He has done a lot for our community. In terms of the event itself, it's a great driver for Fountain Valley economy as well. We have many of the pilots are housed in Fountain Valley hotels. Most of my friends that I know go to the airshow every year. There's very little impact on Fountain Valley itself. So the thoughts on the event is it's a family-friendly event that benefits the neighboring city of Fountain Valley. There is noise, obviously, for that one weekend. It does impact us a little bit, but overall, I would say the residents enjoy the airshow. It's a positive sentiment, and with that, I would fully ask that you approve this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Seal Beach City Council Member Lisa Lando. Lisa, I see that you're unmuted. You can go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Bear with me. Okay. Hi, my name is Lisa Lando, and I am the current mayor of Seal Beach. It is with great enthusiasm that I offer my strongest endorsement for the upcoming Pacific Airshow. This remarkable event has become one of the most anticipated highlights in our region, drawing visitors from across the state and beyond to witness breathtaking aerial performances, world-class aviation displays, and engaging entertainment. breathtaking aerial performances, world-class aviation displays, and engaging entertainment for all ages. The Pacific Airshow is far more than a thrilling weekend of aviation, aviation excellence. It's a celebration of community spirit, innovation, and connection. For the residents of Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, and all the neighboring cities, this event offers a unique opportunity to come together, share in the excitement, and foster a sense of unity that extends well beyond the shoreline. The airshow attracts thousands of spectators, which in turn benefits our local businesses, supports tourism, and stimulates our regional economy. From hotels and restaurants to small shops and local attractions, the positive economic ripple effect is felt throughout our communities. The Pacific Airshow serves an inspiring showcase for the skill, dedication, and teamwork of pilots and aviation professionals. It provides educational opportunities for our youth, sparking interest in aviation, science, techno, and technology and engineering. The event's commitment to excellence and safety is matched only by its ability to ignite wonder and pride in everyone who attends. The camaraderie and patriotism fostered during this event reflects the very best of what it means to be part of a connected and supportive community. I wholeheartedly support the continued success of the Pacific Airshow, and I'm confident it will once again deliver an extraordinary experience for residents, visitors, and participants alike. I fully support this, and I hope you will approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you. And we just had one other that we aren't able to find, Orange County Supervisor Janet Nguyen. Janet Nguyen or Representative?
I believe that that's Austin Edsel. That's speaking on behalf of Supervisor Nguyen, if you see him in the meeting.
Yes. Okay, I see that. Austin, you're being moved in right now.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Austin Edsel, District Director for Orange County Supervisor Janet Nguyen. The supervisor has a South Coast Air Quality Management District meeting right now. She was not able to attend, but I will read her statement on her behalf. Dear Chair Harmon and Commissioners, as the supervisor representing Huntington Beach in Orange County's first district, I am writing to express strong support for the Pacific Airshow and urge the commission to approve staff's recommendation granting a permit. The Pacific Airshow has become one of the most anticipated annual events in our community, attracting visitors from across the globe while showcasing our beautiful coastline. The airshow is not only an incredible experience for residents and visitors, it's also a major economic boost, generating more than $120 million in overall economic impact. Visitor spending creates hundreds of jobs and increases tax revenues benefiting local services. Beyond these economic benefits, the work that the airshow organizers have done to engage our local schools and empower our students with opportunities to learn should be commended. The airshow fosters community pride and offers free viewing opportunities along our coast, making it accessible to people of all ages and backgrounds. Event organizers have worked closely with stakeholders to ensure that the airshow operates in compliance with environmental and public safety requirements. This includes measures to protect sensitive coastal resources while maintaining a safe, family-friendly environment for attendees. Approving the permit will allow this beloved world-class event to continue to bring joy, economic vitality, and positive attention to our region. I respectfully urge the commission to approve the Pacific Airshow's permit. Thank you for your consideration. Supervisor Janet Nguyen.
Thank you. We have no more elected officials signed up. Before we move to public comment, I'll also note that we have the City of Huntington Beach staff, Jennifer Villa Senor and Eric McCoy on Zoom and available for questions, as well as Eric Para, the Huntington Beach Police Chief, on Zoom and available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. We're very excited to hear from the rest of the public. I'd just remind you to be as efficient with your testimony as you can. We really want to make sure we get to deliberations in a timely manner this afternoon as well. With that, looking forward to hearing from you.
Okay, moving to public comment for this item. We have in-person Mr. Amory Hanson, followed by Michelle Black, and then Rhonda Bolton.
Thank you, ma'am chairwoman. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of IM12V, the Great Pacific Airshow's permit. I truly believe the Great Pacific Airshow will provide great economic benefits to Huntington Beach, as it has done several previous years. I appreciate the effort of the Coastal Commission to mitigate environmental concerns and believe the conditions proposed will do so. The airshow will also provide pilots with unique views of Huntington Beach's beaches, in line with the Coastal Commission's mission to encourage beach access. I urge the commission to grant the permit for Huntington Beach's finest event. Once again, I urge a yes vote on IM12V. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Black and Rhonda Bolton.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle Black, Carson Black, and Minter on behalf of the Bolsa Chica Land Trust. Our ask is simple, that the project either be conditioned to protect the Bolsa Chica Ecological Reserve or denied. Right now, the CDP does not protect ESHA and the reserve from significant disruption of habitat values. The airshow harms the reserve. Low flyovers exceed 100 decibels, and that's from a city study, flushing flocks of birds. Once streamers were dropped and tangled in power lines in the reserve over active oil operations. C D F W and State Lands asked the city and airshow to stop flying over the reserve. They didn't. Our ask is threefold. First, a condition requiring the airshow be planned to avoid the reserve. Special Condition 17 provides for pilot briefings with C D F W. These briefings don't work. The consent order contains this condition, and low-altitude flyers of the reserve occurred on the very first day last year, even though the air boss said avoidance was totally possible. As to flight paths, the city's final E I R states, the determination of flight paths and altitudes are dictated primarily by ingress and egress routes to and from the airshow performance area and the sequence of airshow performances. The applicant controls these factors. It can and should minimize flyovers. Mr. Elliott says they have GPS to avoid it, so why haven't they done that yet? Mind you, the FAA recommends full avoidance of sensitive habitat. Reserve flyovers happen on practice days, not performance days. If they can avoid it on performance days, and they've shown that, again, why don't they do that all the time? Second, Special Condition 16 must be revised to require monitoring at all of Bolsa Chica, 1,400 acres, with flight recorder data and reports approved also by reserve managers, State Lands, and C D F W. Our third ask goes to enforcement. To be blunt, we don't trust the city or the airshow to protect the reserve. The city allowed the airshow to operate four years without a C D P. Resource agencies met with the city and airshow. Agency staff shared personal observations of flyovers and impacts, and the city claims it has no evidence of flyover impacts. The E I R has no mitigation for this. Our trust has to be in the commission. You have the authority to prevent harm to ESHA. Please, continue the matter if needed. Extending it to a five-year C D P isn't the answer.
Thank you. Rhonda Bolton is our last in-person speaker. Then our first Zoom speakers will be Vic Leipzig, Larry Sloanam, and John Carter. Rhonda, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rhonda Bolton. I'm a Huntington Beach resident and was also a member of the Huntington Beach City Council from 2021 to 2024. I am here to urge you to proceed with the utmost caution in dealing with the airshow operator, Pacific Airshow LLC, which I'll refer to as P A S. The commission has already experienced P A S's way of doing business. Things were no different when I was on the city council. I found it very hard to get answers to questions from P A S, matters ranging to whether they had adequate insurance coverage, should heaven forbid there be an accident, to understanding what, what the foundation was for their estimate of $100 million in economic impact. If they had $100 million in economic impact on our area, Huntington Beach would not have the multimillion-dollar budget deficit that we have now. I've never seen any credible evidence to support that economic impact estimate. On the whole, and from the perspective as a policymaker and regulator dealing with this company, I found that P A S just simply didn't seem to take compliance seriously. I felt like we were involved in a constant game of catch me if you can. These, their credibility and accountability wouldn't be a big issue if they were just selling popsicles on the beach. They're not. As Special Condition Number 20 says, the airshow is engaged in a hazardous activity. And so in this unique instance, we have to be very, very careful. And I urge you to, to consider, you know, P A S's past action and interaction with the state regulatory agencies, because that's more of an indication of P A S's way of doing business than what you are seeing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have 18, we have 18 Zoom speakers. Just a note. Vic Leipzig, you should be able to unmute now.
Thank you very much. My name is Vic Leipzig, Chairman, Chair Harmon and Commissioners. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Bolsa Chica Conservancy, in place of our president, Bob Hoxey, who recently had throat surgery and unable to, to participate. The concerns of the Bolsa Chica Conservancy are not to support or oppose the permit itself, but rather to support the strongest possible conditions to protect the Bolsa Chica Ecological Reserve. Past airshows have involved aircraft flying low, at low elevations over the reserve with disruption to bird life and other, and other wildlife, as well as the public that utilizes the Bolsa Chica primarily for its tranquility. So we are strong supporters of both Condition 16 and Condition 17. In regard to 17, if there is a possible way for the, for the commission to impose even stronger, more enforceable regulations about the elevation of aircraft, or to direct aircraft away from the Bolsa Chica altogether, we would, we would strongly support any stronger language than is present in the existing Condition 17. As for 16, the monitoring program, we, it looks to us as though the monitoring program outlined in the conditions is strong. However, we strongly encourage the commission to rely upon the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and its personnel, and to authorize the, your director, commission's director, executive director, to grant the condition to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, say so over the quality of the, of the monitoring program. I myself was a member of the Huntington Beach City Council and mayor, and can tell you that the public in this area is a strong supporter of protection of the Bolsa Chica Wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Larry Sloanam. You should be able to unmute now. Following that will be John Carter, Mel Nutter, and Bob Hoxey. Larry Sloanam? All right, I'm not seeing any movement. We will move to John Carter. John Carter, you should be able to unmute now.
Hi, Vic. Hello, John Carter, amigos de Bolsa Chica. Want to thank Chair Harmon, the Commissioners, and the staff. Amigos de Bolsa Chica, we're closing in on 50 years of advocating for the protection, restoration, and health of what is now the Bolsa Chica Ecological Reserve. We want to thank the commission and the staff for their efforts taken thus far to mitigate and minimize any negative impacts that the airshow has had and may have on the critical environment and the animals within the Bolsa Chica Ecological Reserve. I see Mel is on the docket here, so I'm going to step on his toes a little bit and take some of his words. We are concerned that in the addendum that the staff now recommends that the C D P be issued for a full five-year period, our concern is that the revised Condition 16H does not provide the full protection that B C R, B C E R deserves. The condition as revised recites that the executive director, rather than the commissioners, may determine that changed circumstances require that the applicant seek an amendment or apply for a new C D P. If monitoring in '25 establishes that severe impacts are experienced, but only changed circumstances trigger the need for an amendment or a new C D P, then coastal resource protection may fail. But yeah, we think that the monitoring results should be treated as the baseline to judge potential impact of future events. Past events have not been fully assessed. Rather than giving a full five-year green light, we believe that the commission and the wetland should have the benefit of a comprehensive review of the impact of the 2012, 2025 event directly. The staff's proposed Condition 16A still requires that the applicant reach an agreement with three state agencies. The terms of the agreement have yet to be negotiated. Commission should consider modifying the condition to require the applicant to comply with the monitor, monitoring demands of all three state agencies, including C D F W. In short, if this coastal development permit is approved, a comprehensive review of all environmental mix will be crucial for the future events. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mel Nutter.
Commissioners, I am Mel Nutter and currently am the President of Amigos de Bolsa Chica, and I'm delighted that John Carter essentially took what I intended to say and made sure that it became part of the record. Because Amigos and the Coastal Commission have both for the last 50 years or so been involved in concerning itself with the health and protection of the Bolsa Chica wetland resources. And if the Pacific Airshow is granted a coastal development permit, every possible measure should be taken to avoid disturbances to the creatures and the natural resources at Bolsa Chica. We would point out that the airshow is indeed a private event sponsored by a private company. And so presumably, the fact that flights are to be directed near and over potentially the Bolsa Chica ecological resource means that ultimately, it's that private company that's responsible for whatever the consequences are. And we think that it really is important that the monitoring be treated as a baseline information for 2025, so that you can judge the potential impact of future events. Past events were not fully assessed, and rather than blindly giving this event a five-year green light, we believe that you and the wetland should have the benefit of comprehensive review of the event. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next is Bob Hoxey, followed by John Kudahy, Vicky Benzing, Scott Thomas, and Omar Holmes. Bob Hoxey. Oh, Bob, you're, you're still muted. There you go.
Sorry. I'd like to thank members of the, the commission for the time and effort putting into this. Sorry, as Vic said, I just got home from the hospital having surgery, so it's a little tough to talk. But this was important. I am the chairman of the Bolsa Chica Conservancy. We're the NGO that was formed by the Bolsa Chica Plant Commission back in 1989. We have been active. We're located at the corner of Warren and P C H, so we're, we're there on site every day. And we've been actively watching what the airshow has, the impact it's had on the Bolsa Chica Ecological Reserve. And we support the staff recommendations. We think they've done an amazing job. And on a personal note, meeting Kevin, I was going to tell you that, what a caring person he is, and what a wonderful problem solver he is, but knowing that he was born in Fountain Valley now, I'm not sure. But we fully support the staff recommendations and appreciate the work they've done, and hope that you approve this for the five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Kudahy. We see that you're on two devices. You should be able to unmute on one of them.
Good morning. Or are we still morning? Good afternoon. My name's John Kudahy. I'm president of the International Council of Airshows, the organizing body for the worldwide airshow community. I've held the position I'm in now for almost 30 years. I'm participating today to provide some background on airshows and the impact that they have on the people and the communities in which they're held, and to put some of the other testimony you've heard today into a larger context. The Pacific Airshow is without question one of the three or four biggest, best, and most well-run airshows in the country. We think of it as a flagship or foundational show of the world airshow, worldwide airshow community. Each year, one Each year, more than 250 airshows are held in nearly every corner of the United States, from coast to coast, in large cities and small towns, in all 50 states. Airshow pilots use aviation and flight to entertain, educate, and inspire more than 10 million spectators annually. These events don't last long. Nearly all of them, including the show in Huntington Beach, are held over the course of just three days. And during these amazing weekends, the events provide the communities in which they are held with the most unique form of entertainment in the world. They help to explain history, technology, and science in a way that makes it accessible and interesting to people who might not otherwise be interested, and they inspire hundreds of thousands to pursue excellence and follow their dreams. When they're done, our events leave a significant economic impact on those same communities. The Pacific Airshow is one of our biggest and best, so its effect is more significant than the average, but the total economic impact of airshows nationwide now approaches $20 billion per year. In closing, my message is simple. On behalf of all those people planning to attend and enjoy the Pacific Airshow, I urge you to accept the staff recommendation and approve the event to move forward in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Vicky Benzing, followed by Scott Thomas, Omar Holmes, Chris Efting, David Reinerson. Vicky Benzing, go ahead. You're still muted. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Vicky Benzing. I'm a California resident. I live in the coastal community of Monterey, and I'm speaking to you today to ask for your support of the Pacific Airshow in Huntington Beach. I have perhaps a unique perspective of airshows, as I'm one of the aerial performers. That is, I'm one of the few credentialed civilian pilots who's privileged to perform in airshows across the country. Airshows are truly a wonderful form of family entertainment. They bring families together in the outdoors and away from screens to witness the awe-inspiring gift of flight. It's hard not to watch an airshow and be inspired. I know that I was inspired at an airshow long ago, as were many of my pilot friends. Last weekend, I flew an airshow in the small coastal community of Arcata in Northern California. Sunday morning after Saturday's show, one of the city council members pulled me aside and told me that he had received a call from one of his constituents. This person told him that after watching the airshow, his young daughter now wanted to be a pilot. And this is just one example of the very large quantity of feedback that I've received over the years about how watching me fly in an airshow ignited a spark in a young person. At the Pacific Airshow in Huntington Beach, the flying will take place over the water offshore. It will allow thousands of families to gather and enjoy a day together watching America's best flight teams perform in the skies above. There will always be the few who complain of the noise or the potential impact to wildlife, or whatever they can think of to complain about, but I urge the Commission to ignore personal opinions and the emotional hyperbole, and focus on the science and the data. Kevin has commissioned a study, and it was conducted and found no adverse impact on the environment or wildlife. So make that the basis of your decision to approve the staff's recommendation and allow the (noise) take flight.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Chair Harmon, Commissioners, and staff. My name is Scott Thomas. I'm the Vice President of CNCA Audubon Society. We want to thank everybody who worked on this to get this as far, particularly in regards to Bolsochica, that's why I'm here speaking today, and the protection of the reserve and its inhabitants, primarily the birds. We understand that it's a difficult environment to work in right now to do this kind of protections. We do support the staff recommendations in general, but we do have some comments I'd like to make. One, to repeat what a number of people have said, we had wished that the recommendations would be more requirements than recommendations in regards to altitudes, or even a recommendation or a requirement that the airshow avoid airspace to the extent safe over Bolsochica completely. We wish we could reconsider that. In regards to monitoring, the best thing that can come out of this, of a monitoring effort, is to understand what the impacts to birds and other wildlife are and how detrimental they are. There's no question that there are impacts, and any idea that this kind of noise at 100 decibels, a sudden influx of airplanes in the sky, doesn't cause a disturbance is just plain wrong. In order to get to good monitoring, which is the minimum that can be done, we hope you'll consider working with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife in coordination. Make sure that the monitors are qualified and understand the birds and have experience with birds and disturbance, are in the right place at the right time, and the best way to do that is to work with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife managers of the reserve to make sure that the best data gets collected so that we have the best understanding of the impacts. And finally, before we get done, we're not fond, wish you hadn't gone to a five-year permit, a one-year permit, to understand the impacts first, is a better idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Omar Holmes, Chris Efting, David Reinerson, Dan Hay, and Rod Wilson. Omar Holmes.
Good afternoon, Chair Harmon, members of the Commission and Commission staff. My name is Omar Holmes, and I am the Chief Marketing Officer for Visit Huntington Beach. Visit Huntington Beach is the private nonprofit destination marketing organization for Huntington Beach. Our mission is to promote tourism to Huntington Beach, which in turn fuels the local economy, creates jobs, and supports the economic vitality and quality of life for the community. To date, tourism is the sixth-largest industry in HB, supporting more than 5,000 jobs. The Pacific Airshow is a highly anticipated event in Huntington Beach, both by locals and visitors. This family-friendly event's unique offering and upbeat energy embody Huntington Beach's welcoming vibe, patriotic spirit, and sense of adventure. Spectators can enjoy the airshow from outside the event footprint, or inside the approved fence area for an elevated experience. And lastly, as several members on the call have mentioned already, the airshow is held in October during Huntington Beach's offseason, which helps sustain our local economy outside of the busy summer months. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Chris Efting. You should be able to unmute now. Chris Efting, you were briefly unmuted for a half a second. Chris Efting, you should, are you able to unmute? All right, I'm not seeing any more movement from them. We'll move to David Reinerson. I see that you're joining via phone. You should be able to unmute now. You might need to dial all-star six.
Good afternoon, Dave Reinerson, 30-year resident of Huntington Beach. I want to start by stating that I'm not intrinsically opposed to airshows, or airshows in and around Huntington Beach specifically. I've attended quite a few in my time. What I am opposed to is the lack of respect at the current promoter shows for citizens of Huntington Beach and for the environment. A responsible promoter would not have held multiple years' shows without proper permitting. A responsible promoter would have not missed the deadline to file this year's permit application by over two and a half months. A responsible promoter would have provided the nine plans required by the Coastal Commission in a timely way, so they could be reviewed by both the Coastal Commission and the public. A responsible promoter would ensure that the flight paths of performing individuals and groups conform with the requirements to avoid sensitive environmental locations, especially at low altitudes. A responsible promoter would have not blocked off access to public pier and public beach without permission, so they could charge patrons for access to those public spaces. In short, this promoter shows a consistent pattern of irresponsibility to both the Coastal Commission and to the public, a pattern that values profit and expediency over responsibility. I believe that the applicant's irresponsibility should factor heavily in any decision that the Coastal Commission makes, and strongly argues against approving a five-year permit. The applicant should demonstrate its ability and willingness to comply with the requirements before getting a multi-year permit approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, back to Chris Efting. We see that you're able to be moved in as a panelist this time. You should be able to unmute. Chris Efting, okay, there's your video. Oh, you're still muted. Chris Efting, can you unmute yourself? It was briefly unmuted again. I think there's an issue with the unmuting. We unfortunately aren't able to hear you. Give us a moment, we'll come back to you at the end. We're going to move to Dan Hay. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Dan Hay, President of Premier Girls Fastpitch Inc., a Huntington Beach-based national company. I am also a former Chairman of the Board of the Orange County Boy Scouts of America and serve on the OCBSA Board of Directors with Kevin. I operate a very large 17-day public event that generates over $130 million in economic impact to Orange County each year, and this is calculated by destination analysis. I am here to speak in support of the Pacific Airshow, operated and owned by Code Four and Kevin Elliott. Kevin Elliott is a top professional and runs one of the best publicly-attended events in our county each year. He is very conscious of the environment and takes all precautions to ensure the safety of the public, as well as the wildlife along our coast during this majestic and well-attended event each year. The Pacific Airshow is responsible for bringing hundreds of millions of dollars of economic impact to Huntington Beach and its surrounding cities each year. I'm not quite sure why former Huntington Beach Councilperson Pam Bolton was confused about what $100 million looks like, but I assure you, this is a $100 million event. As a fellow Orange County event operator, and a business owner and resident of Huntington Beach and Fountain Valley, I am in complete support of the approval of the Pacific Airshow by the Coastal Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rod Wilson, Dustin Emery, Jackie Robinson, and then we'll try Chris Efting again. Rod Wilson, go ahead.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Rod Wilson, and I've lived in Huntington Beach for 25 years, just a couple of blocks from the Bolsochica Conservancy. This isn't just an event for our city, it's something our community looks forward to all year. For three days, families, veterans, aviation fans, and kids watch in awe as the world's best pilots streak across the sky, a rare moment of shared excitement, with everyone secretly wishing they were in the cockpit. Huntington Beach has many events, but this is the pinnacle. Voted the number-one airshow in the world, that recognition comes from unmatched attention to detail, the beach, the people, the safety, and the magic of bringing together the best of the US military and top civilian pilots. Year after year, they've done this, they've done the nearly impossible, making it bigger and better while keeping it welcoming for all. The owner, Kevin, is a true hometown hero. Last year, bad weather grounded the show, so Kevin made sure everyone who attended could come back this year and enjoy the show they could not see last year. Who does that? Only someone who truly cares about people, visitors, and the community experience. The airshow draws millions during a slow season, generating hundreds of millions in economic impact, and Huntington Beach spends nothing, yet gains millions for the city budget and priceless global exposure from hundreds of millions of social media views showcasing our city as the place to be. It's one of the safest major events anywhere. No arrests, no incidents, and everyone who wants to enjoy the day can do so for free. Even Maverick and Iceman show up for hundreds of thousands of photos with guests. The residents of Huntington Beach are proud of this event, and we believe the state of California should be proud to host it year after year. Since it began in 2018, the Bolsochica Wetlands have continued to flourish with more visitors, more programs, exhibit, and bird activity.
Thank you. Thank you, Rod Wilson. Next is Dustin Emery, Jackie Robinson, Chris Efting, and then Kathy Rider.
Perfect, thank you. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Dustin Emery, and I'm a resident of coastal Orange County, specifically Dana Point. I'm here in support of the Pacific Airshow's permit for 2025. I believe this event brings a tremendous value to our coastal communities in Orange County, specifically Huntington Beach. It draws in hundreds of thousands of visitors, it supports local businesses, it inspires young people, like my two kids, with STEM, aviation, and service. Overall, I wanted to make a comment that the staff's report makes sense, but I don't think people realize how difficult it is to put on an event like this. My listening to this call just shows how many redundant approvals there are, and kind of government watchdogs waiting for you to slip up if you don't do everything perfectly. I believe these conditions kind of go beyond what's reasonable. I think the Pacific Airshow is being a good partner and agreeing to these terms, but these events are hard to set up, and we need to encourage them. I encourage the Coastal Commission to lower future barriers to other organizers who may not be as well-heeled as a candidate as the Pacific Airshow. I encourage you to approve this permit. We need to ensure that the airshow and others like it can continue to thrive and host events along our coastline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity.
In 1945...
Hold on, we can actually hear you this time, Chris Efting, but you'll be next after Jackie Robinson. We'll come back. Jackie, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in support of Pacific Airshow. I'm Jackie Robinson, the founder and Executive Director of the nonprofit WAWOS, stands for "We're All Working on Something." Our mission is to disrupt the narrative around physical disability in kids and teens, promote access to adventure for people of all abilities, and advocate inclusion. For over six years, Pacific Airshow has been a tremendous partner within our community events program. In this capacity, Pacific Airshow has annually provided up to 60 complimentary tickets to the VIP Premier Club, valued north of $10,000, which allows our organization to host local families and their children with disabilities in a catered, fully-accessible area to enjoy this incredible event at no cost to them. Many of our guests share that Pacific Airshow is the first time they've arrived at an event with their child, and every aspect of accessibility has been considered. Beyond that, lots of performers stop at the Premier Club for meet-and-greets, and the kids thrill at being seen and celebrated for their full selves beyond a diagnosis or device, and for their interest in aviation. Pacific Airshow is truly barrier-free to families and kids with disabilities. Kevin Elliott, Code Four, the organizers, recognize and address the importance of features like significant infrastructure for easy movement across the sand, accessible bathrooms, and wide, uncluttered space. That helps those who use assistive devices, and they can move easily for a truly inclusive experience. Pacific Airshow champions accessibility and showcases a spirit of charity by partnering with and supporting organizations like WAWOS. And as a parent to a child with a physical disability, I'm grateful for their thoughtful consideration, and we hope to keep this event on our calendar this year and beyond. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now, Chris Efting. I hope you're parked. Go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much for your patience. I am currently 3,000 miles away in the Berkshire Mountains, that was the problem, but I did not want to miss this. I'm driving, I don't have a script in front of me, I'm just calling to speak from the heart. I've written about Huntington Beach for many years, I've written about seven or eight books, two books about the Bolsochica Wetlands, over 500 articles by history in the LA Times, and I want to say that since Huntington Beach was incorporated in 1909, there has never been an event that has brought the city together on the levels that the great Pacific Airshow does, not just in terms of the economy. As a journalist, I've interviewed hundreds of attendees to a person representing every economic and ethnic strata, and it's a remarkable event. I'm also a board member on the Bolsochica Conservancy. I don't speak on their behalf today, but as somebody who cares deeply about the environment, I have full faith that Kevin Elliott, as always, will be responsive, reactive, and as flexible as he needs to be to take care of the wetlands, take care of the city, take care of Orange County, and make this once again the greatest airshow on earth, which again, in the history of Huntington Beach, there's been nothing like. So I deeply encourage your support today of the airshow, and thank you for being patient in hooking me in here.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Next, Kathy Rider.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Rider, 40-year resident of Huntington Beach, and my concern is, is while I support the airshow, my concern is this now a five-year permit. We know that the promoter has a past practice... the promoter has a past practice of not submitting required plans or applications in a timely manner. You know, we know that we've got all this list of conditions and recommendations, but I honestly don't feel that we can assume that they will automatically do these, so I would like the Commission to consider giving a permit only for 2025 and allowing us to watch the promoter actually follow through with all of these proposed conditions, because it seems disingenuous to grant a long-term range permit without the understanding if these conditions can reasonably be implemented, and if they aren't, what is going to be the consequences. So again, while I'm a supporter of the air show, I really think we need to give it just a one-year shot to make sure that this, who I would consider at this point so often a bad actor in terms of following rules, not this opportunity to have an entire five-year permit, just to make sure that these conditions can be followed, because there is no guarantee that they will be. Think about it, from 2016 until now, this is the first time that we are getting an official permit with official conditions. That's eight years of skirting and scouting around the law, and I just feel that we should be mindful of that and make sure that we understand that giving them a one-year opportunity to prove that they can and will follow all of these excellent proposed conditions should be the benchmark before we grant them a long-range permit. So thank you for giving us, who live here in Huntington Beach, an opportunity to not only support the air show, but make sure that we preserve our environment and we be mindful of making sure we have good public access to our private, to our good public access to our public beaches. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Larry Sloanam, who we were unable to unmute earlier. We see that you're muted now. Can you try talking? Larry Sloanam?
Yep.
Okay, there you go.
I'm here. Not too sure where I'm clicking on though, but you can hear me in there.
Yes, we can hear you.
That's good. I absolutely agree with what Kathy Rider has said, and also the comments that were made by David Rednerson earlier, but primarily, the concern is, the show is great, there's a lot of things we like about the show, been here for 40 years, and there's a lot of great aspects about the show, but following the requirements, following the guidelines, they've demonstrated, the owner, or Kevin Elliott's company has demonstrated that they're not fully complying with having to file these reports and going by the standards. You know, I don't know how we can stress any longer. They have a track record of not complying with, you know, the guidelines, because there's no enforcement, there's no real way of enforcing it. They either don't do it, or they skirt it, or however, you know, they get around it, and there's a lot of other considerations that are coming to a fact that they've talked about possible making changes to the operation of what they offer there that could be, you know, bad for the environment, or potentially bad for the environment, and potentially bad for the public. And, you know, so they really need to put up, in respect of, you know, showing what they can do for the next year as a year permit as opposed to a five-year permit. Five years will give them way too much latitude to work around things. They should be willing to, you know, comply with, you know, the Coastal Commission's guidelines. You know, granting them a one-year approval seems fair. It doesn't hurt them, doesn't hurt anybody to have that in place and provides additional protection for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And we just had two other people that we weren't able to find. If I call your name, please raise your hand. Edwin Laird. And then the other one is the legendary acrobatic aviator, Sean D. Tucker, who was here briefly earlier, but I assume he's in the sky right now. I'm, I see one hand raised. You should be able to unmute. Under the name Patricia Goodman. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners and Chair Harmon. I really appreciated the staff report. It would have been helpful to have had it earlier, but we are very grateful for the work that's been done by staff. I would encourage the Commissioners to adopt it, as well as the recommendations from the Bolsochica Land Trust. I do have concerns also about extending the permit for five years. Since this is the first time a permit is issued, this will give the community, the Coastal Commission, and other agencies the operation, the opportunity to review data, and that's sensitive to our marine life and flora, fauna, air quality. And just one thing, I've heard a couple of comments that there aren't, there are people in the community who leave over that weekend because of either PTSD and pets' sensitivity to noise. So it's not a blanket, as in many events, support for this air show at this location. There's no doubt about it, it's patriotic, it encourages science and enthusiasm, and brings some economic benefit to the area, but there's a lot of controversy around it. But this is one area, the sensitivity to our Bolsochica, that the community fought so hard to protect over the last 50 years, that we would hate to see any continuing damage to that area. So I encourage the Commissioner to... Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers.
Excuse me, thank you very much to the public for your testimony, and now I will return to the applicant. I believe they have reserved five minutes for rebuttal.
Sure, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And I apologize if I get this wrong, obviously this is my first time, but just to address a couple of the comments that were made, obviously, we understand that there's some concerns with respect to the five-year authorization, but I would reiterate to the Commission that it's necessary for continuity and financial stability of the event. We can't well sell partnerships or any kind of relationships with respect to hospitality or ways to make this financially sustainable if we don't know and we don't have the certainty that we can hold the event predicated on our compliance with conditions. We've obviously worked closely with the staff to integrate an adaptive management plan that allows for annual reassessment of the potential impacts to the coastal resources, so we hope that that will meet with the Commission's satisfaction. As far as public access, we've agreed to the Commission's conditions and have taken steps to make this event as accessible as possible, as you heard from some of the speakers. We really have tried to go above and beyond to that end, so I won't opine too much on that point. As far as avoidance of the Bolsochica, I had articulated that it's important to me, and as the staff report addendum notes, full avoidance of the Bolsochica is not possible for safety reasons, nor does Pacific Air Show as the applicant have control over those items and flight data confirmed by the FAA that all flights were over 1,000 feet. So I would encourage review of the staff report with respect to those concerns, and again, we will do everything within our power to brief the pilots and explain the sensitivity of the ecology, but you know, just as a matter of fact, the Long Beach ILS goes over the Bolsochica Ecological Reserve at 1,500 feet, and there are approximately 100 aircraft that fly over there every single day, and as a matter of fact, the air show actually reduces the number of overflights of the Bolsochica significantly because of the flight restrictions imposed over the top of it. So I just want to be very clear about that. We do not control or direct where people are able to fly, as that is in control of the FAA. As far as protection of the Bolsochica, proposing extensive biological monitoring pre, during rehearsal, during the actual event, and after the event is important to us and something that we're offering as part of the conditions, and obviously noting that our prior year monitoring that we did do, despite whatever may have been shared during public comments, detected no significant impacts. Pacific Air Show, again, has committed to an adaptive management plan where under the biological impacts of 2025 will be monitored and air showed activities monitored and modified if warranted to minimize any impacts or adverse effects. And then to address the comment about Pacific Air Show being an unreputable promoter because we don't obtain our proper permits, I sort of, I will address first and foremost that Pacific Air Show was under the impression that we were exempt under the Coastal Act as a temporary event, and then we're not required to obtain a CDP. While I realize that that doesn't absolve us from obtaining one, that was our understanding through all of our work. Pacific, as you might imagine, an event that is as complicated as this has just about every agency under the sun involved with it, including FAA, Southern California TRACON, Homeland Security, FBI, Orange County sheriffs, or Okayak, you name it, they are involved and at the table, including the Coast Guard and everybody. So the idea that Pacific Air Show in an event of this magnitude could happen without obtaining all the requisite approvals and permits and being some kind of a rogue operator is well and truly not a serious consideration. So we regret that we were not in compliance with the Coastal Act under the Executive Director's discretion, under the, but we have worked very hard with staff to rectify those issues, and I hope that that will be, that's been reflected properly in the staff report and that the Commissioners understand that. There are obviously conditions within the permit that we, you know, aren't crazy about, but we've accepted them out of respect for the work of the staff and the Commission and the charge that you have, and we understand that these are necessary for us to be able to move forward with the air show, and we would urge the Commission to consider all of the comments and all of the work that's been done by both staff and us as the applicant to accept the staff's recommendation, and of course, I'm available for any additional questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elliott. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and return to staff.
Thank you Chair. To respond to the comments regarding the avoidance of the Bolsochica Ecological Reserve by the air show, this is a topic we pressed the applicant on throughout the application process and had asked specifically what avenues exist to ensure avoidance of Bolsochica for the organization of the event. The applicant has maintained that they do not have the ability to ensure complete avoidance of Bolsochica Ecological Reserve as long as it is within the temporary flight restriction, which is unavoidable given the five nautical mile radius of the TFR when centered in Huntington Beach. They maintain that the pilots are given a leeway by FAA safety protocol to fly anywhere within the TFR, and while they can provide guidance to the pilots for avoidance, as is done in the pre-flight safety briefing, ultimately is not possible for them to require avoidance of any specific locations by participating pilots. The applicant has the ability to formulate their request for the TFR to the FAA, but it is unclear whether this request can be made to exclude flight within a sub-area of the TFR. So while staff pursue, staff have pursued additional means of restricting flight over Bolsochica, our understanding is in line with the argument by the applicant. I will also note that the staff have discussed a no-flyover designation for Bolsochica with the State Lands Commission and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife several times, which would be the surest way to avoid impacts to Bolsochica. However, we have not received any subsequent status updates on their application and/or its processing for that restriction. I'll now turn it to the Executive Director for additional staff response.
Thank you Seth. I just want to thank everybody for participating in the hearing today, all the public that came out, the elected officials that weighed in. We really appreciate all the input, and I want to thank Kevin Elliott and the Code Four team just for their willingness to work with us throughout this process. I want to note that we were here over a year ago with an enforcement action in front of you, and the last year's show was allowed to proceed through an EDCDO, and with all the information that we have available to us, the conditions of that ECDO were followed by this applicant, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate, you know, and part of that was also submitting a CDP application for this year's show and subsequent shows. So I wanted to note that, that's, we are appreciative of their willingness to work with us and work through conditions and think through how to protect public access and especially public access and biological resources in and around the air show. I did want to specifically address the rationale between, for moving from one year to five year. So as we stated in the staff recommendation, initially, we had recommended a one-year show. The applicant proposed an adaptive management approach to us, and we thought that had some merit. We added some safeguards onto that in our condition that allow for us to evaluate information that's provided by the applicant on biological impacts and public access, and if that information shows that either conditions of the permit aren't followed, or there are impacts that were not adequately addressed in the current permit, we would have an ability to reopen and bring it back to you for an amendment, a new permit, whatever the appropriate path is to address whatever potential issues come up. So that also means that if, in reviewing all the information from, you know, post-event, we agree or find that there aren't additional applicants, then the, sorry, there aren't additional impacts, then the applicant can continue with the show and will do it again the next year for five years. I really feel this gives us an ability to carefully look at the impacts. We don't have a lot of information, that's been one of the problems. So we're going to get the monitoring information we need, and this allows us to review it and bring it back to you if we need to, and allow them to continue the show if it doesn't show that there's impacts. We will be sharing that information with our other state agency partners, of course, as we would always do, and get their, and get their feedback as well. Just wanted to make that point as well. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to you Chair, and we are available for your questions.
Great. Thank you Director Hucklebridge. Okay, I will start with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you to the applicant and for all the speakers today, of course, staff, thank you for your tremendous work on this. Absolutely love the enthusiasm associated with this event. There's not a single person that doesn't appreciate a good air show, clearly promises to be wonderful. I appreciate the conditions, I think they're crystal clear, more than reasonable. I'm thrilled that the staff and the applicant have worked so hard together to move this forward. As we've heard, as you just reiterated, and as the applicant also alluded to, even as a five-year agreement, there's no ambiguity. Conditions must be fully satisfied each year for the event to proceed. I had one question about special consideration number three, the requirement to submit a comprehensive parking plan for the event. I'm assuming, am I safe in assuming that includes transporting attendees from distant parking, as all the local, close parking will be utilized for the event, and that that shuttle transport from distant parking will include accommodations for individuals with mobility challenges?
Yeah, thank you Commissioner. While we had discussed with the applicant, having a shuttle service at one point, that was not something that they proposed in their project. So this, that's certainly something that could be discussed with the applicant further through the compliance for that special condition, but that special condition is just to address their proposed plans for parking management.
Right, and I don't see how a parking plan for the event would not include getting people from distant parking to the location, and that that would include accommodations for mobility-challenged folks. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
I too want to just commend staff for this thorough report. I do come from the land of the legendary acrobatic pilot Sean D. Tucker, and that means something to me. And what that means is when I was a kid growing up, I'd be in the Salinas Valley, typically, you know, playing at a park, and I'd look up and I'd see that red Oracle plane. He was famous for that bright red plane with Oracle written across the wings coming in way too low. But it was awe-inspiring, and it was one of those things that made you think beyond the small town that you were from. And when I think about this event and the way that it draws people from beyond just Huntington Beach, but from throughout California, to not just come see planes, but to see the ocean, and to see this place that we all love, and introduce them to a place that should be protected. My hope, as we move forward, is that the most important piece to me, that I hope we can elevate, is the mitigation, right, but also edge... But also education about Bolsachica to our visitors. It's an opportunity with a captured audience. I'm hoping we get to a point where the, that group can table at the event and share the importance of that habitat and what we've worked together for so long to protect. And so it's an opportunity to create cross-pollination as we move forward, which I think is really important so that we understand the challenges that each of these advocacy groups, as I see them, are pushing. But big picture, just want to share that I'm supportive of the approach that we've put forward, again, with the monitoring being the most important piece to me as we move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Notov.
I wanted to just, I appreciate Director, Executive Director Hucklebridge's explanation to how this is, while it says five years, it's really every year. It is a one-year review. I guess my question on that is, is there any third party that's going to have a look at that? Is the city going to look at the results of the monitoring or is there any third party in that?
So as the conditions are written right now, we don't have, we don't have designated any third party. I think in the, in our natural, the way we would review these things, we would share, as I explained, with the other resource agencies that are, have interest, and frankly, anybody, it's public, it would be a public document. So anything, anybody who wanted to see the monitoring would be able to, we would share with immediately and get their feedback. So that's our intent. And if you're looking for something more specific, please let me know when we can figure out how to address it.
I was just wondering if we want to make, you know, was the city going to be a co, you know, a co-validator or something? I don't know. It's just some, generally having the applicant report on his or her own performance, I question whether, I think it's more valid if there's a third party that'll take a look at that. And so I appreciate the approach, and I, I would like you to think about how you, how you're going to verify it's the real deal. And then just to, you know, Bolsachica is in the, and along with Biona are in the pantheon of wetland protection sagas that California has been struggling with over the years. And we've gotten to a point in Bolsachica where we really haven't, you know, the kind of resource protection that we've worked on for so long. So I appreciate that the applicant is, is, you know, understands that now. I don't know how he lives in the Bolsachica Reserve, but I did see the picture from his backyard, so I don't know how he's living there, but the, it is a very special place. So that would be my only question is just, with that understanding that it really is functionally a one-year review, that, that satisfies my concern. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to express gratitude, gratitude to the staff and to, you know, in the hard work that they put in to work with the applicant. I think there's, there has been at least an issue of trust, and that's something to build on. I mean, we've, we've been in those places before with folks in, and, and I think that there is a real opportunity for some, for some relationship building in this, in this space. And so I'm looking forward to that. I think that the, that the annual check-in and, and is going to, I mean, I'm optimistic that we're going to, that we're going to get there. And it's not just trust between the applicant and the commission. There seems, there's, there's some trust issues with, with community members as well. And I think there's, there's work to be done there, and, and I'm just hoping for a positive trajectory in that regard. The both suggestions made by Commissioner Jackson and Lopez, I think are, should be highlighted. And I know you guys are going to come back and take a look at it, but I do think it is important, especially when you're talking that many people coming to that kind of location, you do need some transportation. And even just small festivals in my small county, we have transportation. We work with our local transit authority to, to create shuttles and those sorts of things. It was also a great opportunity to get people using your local transit as well, and, and it's a, it's a good interface for that and, and gets people on the bus that maybe don't even usually get onto the bus, and especially if it's free and going to an event they really want to go to, even locals. So I think it's important that, that it's part of that transit plan. And I think that the, the interface with Bolsachica is, as promoted by Superintendent Lopez's, excuse me, Commissioner Lopez, is a, is a, is, I think, is, I think is a pretty good, good idea and, and should be supported by the applicant. With that, I'm supportive of the, of the conditions and the project.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? A motion? Commissioner Jackson.
Oh, go ahead and move. Let the commission approve coastal development permit number five dash twenty-five dash zero-two-four-two, pursuant to the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Jackson, a second by Commissioner Lopez. Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, the permit is approved. Thank you. Okay, if you don't mind, I think we'll continue on without a break. That brings us to item thirteen, the deputy director's report for the San Diego Coast District.
Thank you, Chair Harmon. And in the deputy director's report, we are reporting approval of an emergency permit that authorizes the applicant to install a shockcrete tieback protective device on the bluff at five-three-two-two Calumet Avenue in the La Jolla community of the City of San Diego. The follow-up permit, of course, will be reviewed by the commission at a later date. Then we're also reporting four waivers and one immaterial permit extension. We're not aware of any opposition on these items, and we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to the waivers or the permit extensions.
Thank you. Are there any ex parte's to report? Any public speakers on any of the items?
There are no speakers, just those available for questions.
Great, thank you. Do three or more commissioners object to any item in the deputy director's report? Seeing no objections, the commission concurs. And I think now we're going to return to the trailed public comment from this morning. If there's any available, Chris.
We are going back to general public comment. We had a, have a total of twelve speakers signed up. Let me organize my list really quick. First, we will have Walter Lamb, followed by Italia Salvage, and then Janet Rogers. Walter Lamb, you're being moved in. You should be able to unmute and start when you're ready.
Thank you, commissioners. I know you've had quite a long day. I revisit this issue of the Biona Wetlands timeline for precisely the reason that Commissioner Notov mentioned is, you know, we, there are things that have gone on for decades that really have a high level of interest for the public. And so the concern is that with five years ago, you're having a timeline for the Biona Wetlands Restoration Project and, and now not having a timeline. That seems to be a significant, significant step backwards. And there are a number of CDPs that this commission has approved based on a timeline. And so Commissioner Notov, again, I appreciate your mentioning the Biona Wetlands. I know that you were part of the coastal conservancy in two thousand and twelve, when six point two-five million dollars was allocated to, you know, to do the engineering designs. Unfortunately, those got done using the wrong flood control, really unfortunate, unforced error. And I know that you were part of the coastal conservancy again, nine years later in two thousand and twenty-one, when an additional, you know, one point seven million dollars was allocated, which was the last of the Proposition Twelve funds. And then again, you spoke about the importance of sea level rise in two thousand and twenty-two. And again, here we are in two thousand and twenty-five. In two thousand and nineteen, you invited a number of people to come and talk about the Biona Wetlands Restoration Project to get an update because you were concerned about the timing. And it's one of these things where, you know, then we go six years later, and I know sometimes we can just get numb to those things, but that's really then when we see these ecosystems not meeting their potential. And so in October, I believe you're in Redondo Beach, it would be great if we could have a field trip and maybe an informational item, again, six years after the last informational item, about this project, just generally, you know, where it's going. Would really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Italia Salvage, Mark Ranyak, Alice McNally.
Good morning, or good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Italia Salvage with the Biona Wetlands Land Trust. Last month, I spoke about the habitat stewardship work. We are doing an Area A of the Biona Wetlands Ecological Reserve. We have another event tomorrow and also on Saturday, August thirtieth. This first photo shows native species. On the right, we have laurel sumac. On the left, there's some coastal sage scrub. And if you look closely in between, there's also alkali heath, and they are all being surrounded by the invasive species we know as ice plant. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife, our staff and volunteers worked diligently and carefully to remove this ice plant so that the native species could thrive tomorrow. Next slide, please. Okay, and then, yeah, if you see here, this is the results of the work we did. Tomorrow, we have an event from, a stewardship event from nine to eleven AM. Next slide, please. As noted on the flyer, and everyone is welcome to join us in helping to restore the native habitat. This land was designated an ecological reserve twenty years ago, and we are hoping to start a new chapter for Biona Wetlands, a chapter that emphasizes community involvement, ancestral knowledge from tribal engagement, and wildlife-friendly public access. If you have any questions about the wetlands or our work, my email is italia@biona.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Ranyak, Alice McNally, Sam McDonald.
Mark Ranyak. This is Mark Ranyak. I'm a member of the San Diego Embarcadero Coalition. I wanted to kind of just touch base on an issue of the Seaport San Diego project that may not have been discussed enough at this point. San Diego's existing sewer and stormwater systems have proven to be inadequate, inadequate and failure-prone. We've seen this over and over again in the last several years, with significant flooding and spill, sewage spills into the bay and also property damage all around Seaport Village. Here are a couple of images and some data regarding three significant sewage spills into the bay, including the devastating January twenty twenty-four flood, which released uncounted millions of gallons of sewage into the bay. On the right is an image of this major sewage and stormwater flooding right in front of Seaport Village. Clearly, the existing systems cannot handle the loads now. Second slide, please. While part of this responsibility clearly lies with the City of San Diego, One Highway One, the port's selected developer for Seaport San Diego, will only make the pollution and other problems worse. On the left are footprints of the proposed new major buildings, creating four times the roof stormwater runoff compared to existing Seaport Village. The current plan reduces absorbent green landscape and increases impermeable paved areas around, adding stormwater load. Over two thousand new hotel rooms and an additional one point three million square feet of other commercial space will add over six hundred thousand gallons per day of sewage load. If current systems cannot handle existing, how can they handle these enormous added loads unless someone upgrades the infrastructure? Next slide, please. One Highway One has completely excluded this infrastructure problem from their planned Seaport San Diego redevelopment. This will only lead to more bay pollution and property damage. Seaport San Diego in the central Embarcadero planning district, as you know, is omitted from the port's master plan update. With such enormous omitted environmental risks, I urge you...
Thank you, sir. Thank. PFP. Thank you. Alice McNally, Sam McDonald, Leslie Kashiwata. Alice McNally, go ahead. Alice, you're unmuted. You should be able to begin. All right, I'm not hearing anything. I see that you're muted. We are going to move on to the next speaker. Sam McDonald, go ahead.
Hi, this is Sam McDonald, sailor and live aboard in Newport Beach. I know you guys are probably all exhausted. I want to thank Commissioner Wilson for his suggestion earlier today about contacting the SLC about our concerns in Newport Beach. I promise, we poke them as much as we poke you. Any minute now, the SLC will publish the report on the City of Newport Beach's public trust land management, which will be discussed at their meeting next week. I think I've refreshed the page about a hundred times already, trying to wait for the report to get published, but not just yet. We've waited so long for this report, and our community is super nervous to see how it goes. But whatever it says, please do your best to think about us when you design a follow-up action. I'd like to remind the commission that although the SLC has jurisdiction over rates in the tidelands, it's your commission that reviews and approves coastal development permits. And Newport Beach's short-term license conversion program is not just a rates program. The program substantially changes the use of the coast, coast, which affects, which determines the need for a CDP. And this especially affects, this especially affects me, who's a live aboard, which you can actually see where my boat is, right behind me on the background. You guys keep talking about affordable housing and prioritizing it. Well, this program eradicates a form of affordable housing in the boat that I live in. This requires a CDP. This requires you. This is why I waited for four hours to give a two-minute public comment, because I really care and I really hope you pay special attention to what the SLC comes in the report next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Trying Alice McNally again?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. Go ahead.
We all agree that Santa Nofree's radioactive waste must be moved away from the surf to higher ground on Camp Pendleton. Recent events prove this, earthquakes and tsunami warnings in July, climate change bringing king tides of over seven feet, sea level rise thirty-five percent faster than expected globally, more severe storms. The cans are seriously scratched and corroded, as seen in photographic evidence from the SCE, Southern California Edison, which Song continues to deny. Executive Director Kate Hucklebridge and others on your commission have stated that something must be done. You have the authority to revoke Song's license if a substantial issue exists, and it does. Song's license was issued on historic climate data from the NRC and not climate projection data, which was available to them. Without the most up-to-date data being incorporated into the licensing process, it is unclear whether the safety margins for nuclear power plants are adequate to address the risk that climate change poses to the toxic material, most toxic material known to man. Please comment and please do something about this.
Thank you. Next, Leslie Kashiwata, Margaret Gossett, and then Diana Sandoval. Leslie Kashiwata.
Can I have my slides? Thank you. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Leslie Kashiwata, and I reside in Fort Bragg. I sent a letter last Friday pointing out the slow progress towards remediation of the toxic mill ponds on the headlands, and I'm just going to take you on a little tour of some photos of the site, because you will be visiting in September, and you may actually walk the site, but these are things that are a little hard to see. So in this, a view looking east towards Fort Bragg, you can see the location of Pond Seven. So next slide, please. This is a view of Pond Seven to the left, and you can see how oversteepened the slope is. And these slides were taken from the stability assessment report done by Arcadis in two thousand and ten. Next slide, please. This is just beyond that, just to the east towards Fort Bragg. This is a retaining wall where there's, has been significant leakage of, from the pond out into the lowland areas. Next slide, please. And this is further to the east towards Fort Bragg that shows areas where there have been localized instabilities and slumping. So this is taken in two thousand and ten, so we're fifteen years out from there. Next slide, please. So now we're going to go west of Pond Seven to the ocean side of the beach burn. Next slide, please. And this just shows the, the way in which Pond Eight was created. It was by just putting concrete and riprap on top of the cliffs and then, you know, building it up so that a pond could be created. And you'll notice to the right, the outflow. Next slide, please. This is just another slide showing that overspill area. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This shows some of the... ...it's still packed fort some sand, but it's been very little. Look forward to you coming in September and seeing it yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Gossett and Diana Sandoval. Margaret Gossett?
Good afternoon, Chairman Harmon and Commissioners. I want to speak about something fundamental, public trust. The public entrusts this Commission with decisions that shape the coast for generation. That trust depends on a shared commitment to facts, verified, complete, and accurate. But sometimes, important decisions are made based on information from local governments that later proves to be inaccurate, and when that happens and it's not corrected, it doesn't just undermine the outcome of one case, it undermines confidence in the process itself. Staff work under enormous time pressure, I understand that, but this makes it all the more important to verify key facts independently, especially when they come from a party with a stake in the outcome. The Coastal Act was built on a promise that decisions would rest on the best available information and that the public could trust the process even if they disagree with the outcome. I urge you, in every case, large and small, to make sure that promise is kept, because public trust is not a renewable resource. Once it's gone, it's very hard to get back. And finally, sometimes, even after a vote, important facts already in the Commission's own record come to light as having never been verified. The Coastal Act gives you the ability to revisit a decision within thirty days when fairness and accuracy demand it. I hope you'll always consider using that tool. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I am Diana Sandoval, and this is my ninth time discussing the blocked Public Equestrian Hiking Trail at thirty-two fifteen Bohill Road Carpenteria. To recap, this public trail, which should be accessible to the public, has gone unrecorded and blocked for years. Despite this clear violation, Santa Barbara County has known about this for fifteen months, and the Commission has known for fourteen months, but the issue remains, the public trail is unrecorded and blocked. The fifteen-foot wide public equestrian hiking trail easement was required to be recorded prior to land use clearance. Yet, this condition was not met, but the permits were unlawfully issued, violating the Coastal Act and the permit conditions set forth in several CDPs. Slide, please. Since the trail has gone unrecorded, the Commission has the opportunity to require the county to immediately open a southern entrance via Sera Pola Drive, a public street, which we see here. This would allow immediate public-to-public access once recorded. Slide, please. Santa Barbara County is using a one-foot buffer, again, one foot at Sera Pola Drive, which the same property owner owns as an excuse to deny this southern entrance. As we see in this grant deed, the one-foot buffer is part of the same deed and should not be used as an excuse. I urge enforcement staff and you Commissioners to uphold the Coastal Act and ensure that the Pola Trail is promptly recorded and immediately opened to the public. Santa Barbara County Planning and Development has a documented pattern of unlawfully exempting this property from permit requirements and the Coastal Act. Thank you.
Thank you. We had four other speakers that we aren't able to locate at this time. Marcy Snyder, Janet Rogers, Jennifer Creston, Nicole Levin. Please raise your hand. Again, Marcy Snyder, Janet Rogers, Jennifer Creston, Nicole Levin. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Thank you for those speakers that stuck around through our regular agenda to come back to general public comment.
Great. Thank you so much, Chris, I appreciate it. Okay, very briefly, any Commissioners want to ask any questions related to what we heard in public comment? No? Great, amazing, thank you. Okay, well, a couple of things before we close. First, thank you so much to our staff, as always, for the incredible work this month. Our team at AGP, we really appreciate all that you do for us, and of course, the MRCA and folks here at King Gillette, it's just been incredible hospitality, and we love being here. So, with that, we will close this month's hearing and look forward to seeing everyone next month in Fort Bragg.